Monday, May 19th, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a few announcements. On Wednesday, May 21st, at 7:00 PM at the Long Meadow Adult Center, Sabrina Feliciano will, from the Public Affairs Specialist from the Boston region of Social Security, will be there to talk about the registration process and other aspects of receiving Social Security. She will also answer your questions, and that's Wednesday, May 21st, at 7:00 PM. I'm also proud to announce that Long Meadow has been named 2013 Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation in honor of our commitment of effective urban forest management. Long Meadow achieved Tree City USA recognition by meeting the program's four requirements: a tree boarder department, tree care ordinance, annual community forestry budget of at least $2 per capita, and an Arbor Day observation and proclamation. I'd also like to congratulate, from the Girl Scouts of Central and Western Mass, we're proud to congratulate Kathryn Kelly of Long Meadow and Isabel Cummings of Long Meadow. These girls were received the Silver Award, which is the highest achievement that a girl in grade six to eight can earn in Girl Scouts. This is a significant accomplishment, as earning this reward requires many years of challenge and commitment to service, leadership, career exploration, and interest projects. They must demonstrate ability and skills in goal-setting, planning, implementation, relating to others, and creating a project which benefits the greater community. We'd like to congratulate them. I'd like to ask the Board if there's a consensus to send a achievement plaque from the town of Long Meadow to these two girls.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you. Now, are there any resident comments? Yes? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Kurt Friedman. I reside at 24 Ridge Road.
Thank you.
Evening, Long Meadow Board of Selectmen and citizens of Long Meadow. On May 16th, 2014, I was informed that manholes were left inadequately secured on Merryweather Road. On January 10th, 2013, I reported an unsecured manhole on Ridge Road in front of my neighbor's home. I alerted the DPW Director to this hazard and wrote on January 11th, 2013, "I have rarely before witnessed such an act of gross negligence. We are all grateful that no one was injured. I hope never to see anything like this again in my lifetime." I received the following reply from Mr. Rabel: "Thank you for this email and the photos. You will not see this again on my watch." End quote. OSHA 1910.23 reads as follows: "Every manhole floor opening shall be guarded by a standard manhole cover, which need not be hinged in place. While the cover is not in place, the manhole opening shall be constantly attended by someone or shall be protected by removable standard railings. At this time, I urge the Board of Selectmen to impose a clear policy so that the health and safety of the public can be protected. It is suggested that open sewer or storm drain manholes be established as a public hazard, and the Long Meadow Police, along with the DPW and our citizenry, serve as observers, and be called on to report any future occurrences of unsecured open manholes. It is recommended that every DPW worker and all contractors doing work for Long Meadow be informed in writing about the hazards of unsecured manholes, and that appropriate covers equivalent or better than the one shown shall be implemented and the OSHA standards shall be followed." Very truly yours. Kurt Friedman.
Thank you very much.
I'll be emailing everyone photos of what I had sent previously. Some of you have received these photos already.
Could you just slide it off, please?
Friedman, F.R.E.E.D.M.A.N., first name Kurt, C.U.R.T.
Thank you. Any other resident comments? No? Select Board comments. Mark?
Yeah, I have two, and they're both follow-ups to the annual town meeting, which I'd like to thank all the town residents for coming and showing up. There are two items that were passed at the town meeting that I think, despite them being financed and passed by the town meeting, I think require some due diligence by the Select Board, and I ask that maybe later on this evening, we might take them up. And one is that we approved a purchase of a generator for Genesis House. Genesis House is a not-for-profit organization in town, but it's not affiliated with the town government. And my concern is that we probably need some kind of a memorandum of understanding or some other agreement with them, if it hasn't happened yet, in terms of, you know, I mean, issues that may come up with it, everything from what happens when the generator needs maintenance to liability and other things. And I think we need some understanding of that, and I'd ask that the Select Board review that at some point. The second one is the Williams Middle School boiler. I think we discussed that several times here, and when I, in fact, read the warrant article, we approved $100,000, and it did say for the repair of the primary boiler. But I think that we know that the quotation came in much less than that, and I think we ought to just clarify that internally of how we're going to deal with that as we move forward. But I ask that we can defer that later. I wouldn't think we need to discuss either one now.
Any other Select Board comments? Paul?
Yes, today's May 19th. Our clay courts have yet to be opened. I drive by them every day. Those were supposed to be open earlier rather than later, with the conversations we had last year, which was to put a system in place, properly fund it, which we did. And, you know, I would have expected that the timeline would have been somewhere in the beginning of April, let alone the 19th of May. There's been no work done on them. There's weeds there that should have been taken care of. We don't have, we haven't been informed that the crew that's supposed to go out there and prep them, in, you know, terms where they level out the courts of whether they're going to be there or not. And that's, my understanding is it's going to be about a two-week process before they're open, or that's the normal process it should take. And so, at the earliest, we're talking towards the end of May. And I really have a concern about that, since we properly funded it per the recommendation of the Director of Parks and Rec and the Director of DPW. And we had a process that we waited for courts to be open last year specifically to put in a process to avoid any issues like we've had in the past of opening those courts. So, I'd like to request if the town manager can inform the Board of when we expect those courts to be opened, and why we're at the 19th of May with no work done in those courts. And just, I know the person who does the maintenance work. The lines actually have to be nailed down. I didn't realize what they were, that I thought they were chalk lines, but they, they actually nail them down, and it takes a long time to nail down those, because I forgot how many nails, but there's two five-pound buckets worth of nails that go into that. So, anyway, I'd just like to find out of when we expect them to be open, because the money's there, the process should be there, and there's no excuse for them not being open right now.
I do have an email from Mike regarding that subject. He doesn't apologize, but he also states that the contractor is a little bit behind because of rainy weather, and that they probably will not be open until towards the end of next week, they'll begin to work on them.
Any other Select Board comments?
Yeah, we were talking about the Merryweather. Is it true, Paul?
Oh.
Pardon?
You all sure?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, we're talking about Merryweather. I've got a slide behind you showing up on the screen. This, this was on Merryweather this entire weekend. This, the barrier you see is not nailed down, it's movable. The hole that you're looking at is likely about three foot across.
Which one?
Right there.
Is what Mark is pointing to?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's the hole. It's about likely three foot across and three to four foot deep. It's a drainage failure. Apparently, it was opened up when they milled across there. And this was left the entire weekend out on Merryweather unprotected.
Still like that tonight.
Is it still like that tonight?
Moving.
Okay. And this, this is a movable barrier. This thing is not nailed down or anything, so kids could throw it off in the bushes. And this, this could ease the result in a horrific accident. This is a very, very serious piece, and this goes along with the open manholes. It's the same, the same policy. That and the, I wanted to mention, Mark, mom all too, there, Marie. I wanted to mention that Mark had talked about the heating system at Williams, and then I was, I've been doing a little background on the thing, and there's been misinformation or disinformation out on the unit. I still don't know why the unit's being replaced. I've been unable to determine why it's being replaced. It's really only about halfway through its life cycle. It's 16 years old, and a commercial boiler should be in the range of 30 years if maintained properly. There may have been misinformation given to Stephen, too, because Stephen had said parts are no longer available, and that boiler's still in production. It's, they had changed some of the section parts on it, depending on what you do to it, but it's still readily available. But anyway, I wanted to let you know, I was working up a paper to send to all the Select Board members with information, and I just, there's so much information, I need to rework it so it's easier to read. But I think it's gonna, I think it, there's cause for concern when we look at how this thing developed and how this thing has gone through the system this time. And if, I hope we can do better next year on this, because I still not sure what we're doing on this one, Marie.
What do you think is the best way to approach it? I mean, what, are there specific questions we can be asking?
Well, wait until I, wait until I get my thing to you. I'm trying to get the thing in a chronological order, as you can see, I was put together, because this, this thing ricocheted all over the place. It started outright, and it looks like one of our prices was almost spot-on, and then we sprung off in a total different direction and got an A&amp;E firm in for, I don't know why. Because, you know, we have in-house staff that can change the boiler. They can spec the boiler. I mean, division chiefs, this is what they do. Plumbers, this is what they do. So, I mean, there's been so many people brought in, since so many meetings, and this project has now mushroomed into, from three boilers, down to one boiler at 87,000. And we're still looking, as we said, at a structure that we admit may be five to seven years of life. And we're going to spend $87,000, and I just think there's a lot of other options. And I've yet to find in any of the paperwork why it's actually being replaced, other than I, somebody said it's leaking. And there was an estimate of 560,000 throughout there, and I have, I can't find any paperwork with that estimate. So, it's just, I don't know. I just thought I wanted to write it up and give it to you guys.
Well, do you think that would be ready by the third, meaning we could have it on the agenda?
It should be. I had it ready, and I looked at it, and it's so big, it's like four or five pages long, and I've got to find a better way to organize the data so it's easier to read.
Well, we'll put it on the agenda for June 3rd.
Okay. That's it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alex.
I guess my comment has to do with the casinos, and I want to tell people of Long Meadow that I feel that the surrounding community agreement that we obtained was the best that we could have get under the circumstances. And those circumstances include a gaming commission that's really not our friend, surrounding community agreements in other towns that were low, that we had to be compared to. But the big thing to mitigate the effects of the casino is to have no casino at all. And I know that the Select Board has been reluctant previously to get involved in this issue, and now there is no reason to be reluctant. I think it's important for this Select Board, I think it's important for other Select Boards, to take a leadership role in it, and that's something that I intend to do. We've completed our negotiations with MGM. There's no reason to be afraid of them anymore. There's no reason to be afraid of the gaming commission anymore. And I think it's going to be important, as the fall elections come up, is to hold our elected representatives accountable to take a position on this. We can't just, you know, take no position, take no stance. I think that's unacceptable. So, I see the surrounding community agreement as a, an imperfect compromise, but the best compromise we could get. But the best thing we can do is defeat MGM and the casinos this fall.
Any other comments? All right, thank you. I would like to change the agenda around a bit, because we do, oh, it's already 10 after. So, we, I'm going to open the hearing. I don't know too many people that are here, but we have the hearing for the, let's see, where is it? PVTA. G5 bus route. There was a discussion to make changes in the bus route, so we decided to invite the public to come and speak. And is there anyone here to speak in regards to changing the G5 bus line? Yes, would you like to come to the mic, introduce yourself, and give us your comment?
Yeah. Good evening, Marie. My name is Mike Jam Pietro. I'm representing Bay Path College at 588 Long Meadow Street. I was alerted today by Mark Gold about the proposed route change, and all I can say is that we have about 200 students from the Springfield-Hollioke-Chickaby area, some of which commute, and some of which take public transportation. And so, they make use of the PVTA, which comes right by our campus, stops in the front of our campus, and so, just advocate to continue the route.
Do you care about whether it goes farther south, down to the Enfield border? Because that was one of the, I understood the changes. Or are you only interested in the connection between Springfield and?
The primary concern would be serving the greater Springfield area.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask, make a question, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Mike, there's something, there's a disconnect there, too, because PVTA showed us a map at the last meeting, and based on their charting of riders, it shows there's like three people that get off the bus from the Springfield line to Long Meadow. So, if there's more ridership, and I've seen the bus stop in front of Bay Path and pick people up across the street from Bay Path going back that way, if there is, I really think it would help to see how many kids actually do, because their statistics, I mean, they're showing it was, like, by the time they get to the Enfield line, there's one person getting off the bus or something. It really, to me, doesn't represent, I don't know where the numbers came from, these are supposedly their actual counts, and I asked that specific question, because if there's that many kids that are utilizing the bus system, it is not reflected on their data that we saw at our last meeting. So, I think it's important to, if there's some statistics you have, that would help us.
Okay, I can check further, Paul. I'm not suggesting that all 200 utilize the service, but we need to develop some data.
But even if it was a fraction of that, that's much more than what
Than what they're suggesting.
What they're showing.
Any other? Alex?
Now, Marie, I guess I'm a little unclear about the premise of this hearing. Do we have some say in this?
Yes, as our representative for the PVTA is Mark Gold, and we wanted to argue against the changes. We could.
Alex, if I could, Marie. Mary, Mary McGinnis, who is the administrative of PVTA, was here a couple of weeks ago, I guess. And one of the things she said to us is that their route study committee, and they had a group study all their routes, and based on ridership and numbers, they determined that they would, if left on their own, eliminate the route to Long Meadow that goes down Route 5 to the Enfield line. The process is that this then goes to the PVTA Advisory Board, and I sit on that Advisory Board as the Long Meadow representative. And in the past, the Advisory Board has deferred a final decision on end given routes and given towns to the representative from that community who can, you know, object to the change or deletion of the route, and in general, the overall Advisory Committee has deferred to that representative. And so, the comments we had when Mr. McGinnis was here was that we would get a sense of what our community wanted, and also what this Board wanted to do before the meeting that's coming up this Wednesday, which this will be discussed. So, the answer is yes.
Okay.
Marie, I would also say, as long as, that the PVTA also held hearings, and there is one other person, well, one person who particularly, and I'm not going to read this, I have the transcript of the hearing, that a woman named Margaret Eckert spoke vigorously against eliminating the Long Meadow route going south to the Enfield line as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other residents here to make comments on the G5 bus line changes? Okay, thank you.
At this point, are we going to get a sense of, try to find a sense of the Board, Marie, of whether we want to?
So, why don't we discuss, the issue is how we're going to direct Mark Gold, and whether we're going to argue against the change, or are there any specific changes that the Board would like to see? Right now, I think they're talking about eliminating everything south of Converse Street. So, the loop going down to Bay Path College and continuing down to Enfield, they're talking about eliminating. Is that correct, Mark?
Right. It would not change traffic to the Jewish nursing home on Dickinson Street, but would eliminate all the route, all the, the route south of Converse Street down to the Enfield line.
And right now, we have, the school has argued against it, and also one resident. Paul?
The question is, we're charged an assessment by PVTA for mileage of driven in town. And again, according to the map that they gave us, there is basically, it looked like three to four people that were utilizing the bus to get off in Long Meadow. And I think what we have to weigh is, what's the, what's that fee or assessment to Long Meadow versus what it served? And what it showed, it didn't, I don't think we were, I think that was the number of people getting on the bus that was on the chart. I can't tell, I can't remember if it was on or off the bus, but I think that's what we have to weigh, is there, is the financial commitment from the town, or the assessment from the town, worth it if they're showing three people riding? And that's why I think if there's students at Bay Path that are utilizing it, we need to know that, because there's a cost, there's a cost to having it for three people. If it's not effectively utilized, then, you know, the assessment is probably more costly than what the services provide.
Well, Mark, I think that was one of the questions we had asked her, is if we did cut off that, what would be the savings? Because right now, we're paying about $30,000, and she didn't have that answer.
Right. And the reason she didn't have the answer is because the assessment is based on mileage, not on ridership. And so, following the revision of all their routes, they once again sum up all the miles and look at what the, how many miles were in the town of Long Meadow. I presume that they would go down, both in actual numbers and as a percentage of the overall numbers, and therefore, our assessment would probably go down as well. But the assessment is based, and that's probably why, because we don't know what the final routes are going to be, and that's why I don't think Mr. McGinnis was able to make that projection of what would happen to our assessment.
So, it could be anywhere from 500 to 10,000. We have no idea.
No, it's not going to be $500. I mean, it's going to be maybe 10,000 to 30,000, because in theory, it could not change very much at all. You know, now, you'd think it would go down because of the high percentage, but remember, the route along Converse Street is in Long Meadow, and going down Route 5 to Converse Street. So, you know, it might cut our miles by, I don't know, some, a fraction, but, you know, they're also reducing their overall miles of all their routes. And so, I don't know what the number's going to be, but it's not going to drop dramatically.
And Alex?
I mean, one thing that I think we'd lose if the bus did not go down to the Connecticut line would be the ability to connect with the Connecticut bus system, which I think would be too bad, because one of the things that it allows is it allows people to connect into a whole route of buses that go down to Hartford or even to the airport. I think one of the sad things of this area is that we do not have a good public transportation system to the airport. You know, I can say this from personal experience, because I was living in this area for four months without a car, and it was quite, quite an ordeal to get to the airport. Now, most cities who claim to have an airport, it's called Springfield-Hartford, you can get there on public transportation pretty easily. So, I think that would be an additional cost to lose that connection.
And actually, I'm not even sure if that is a connection, because right now, the PVTA's taking it only down to that Mass Mutual for that one, and I'm not even sure if you can take
No, it says, no, it says connection, I mean, this is what it says on the map. And I've looked at this before. There's a, because the Connecticut transit system goes up to that point.
Oh, it does.
To Mass Mutual.
I still think the issue is they're showing three riders going through the town of Long Meadow.
Understood, yeah.
Yeah, and you're right. That's what we asked, is how much would it reduce if we changed the route? And I still think that's still a hinge point on our decision. But you're right, Paul, it's hard to believe there's that few of people using that bus, because I've seen a lot of people getting on off the bus. I mean, they're talking like one or two people per day down the north end of town, or at the south end of town.
She also said by not having signs.
Right.
People don't know where the bus stop is and what time the bus is coming in, and she encouraged the town of Long Meadow to please agree to put up those signs that were put up. Paul?
Mark, is it, if we said, look, we want to continue the service, and then, is there a point where, like, a year from now, we can go back and maybe some, if we do have the proper signage up and down Route 5, for example, that she, she showed us at the meeting with the times when the bus would be there, and we get some better information from Bay Path, for example, of who's going there? Is there, do you know if we can go back a year from now and say, you know, your numbers are right, it was three people, and, you know, we want to change our mind, or is this a long-term commitment that we're making?
It's not a long-term commitment. It's a process, though, that if we choose to, if they decide to continue the routes now, six months from now, they'd have to go through a public hearing, but it's, you know, it's like we went through a public hearing tonight. It's not a big deal. So, and because it would only affect Long Meadow, they would only have to hold it in Long Meadow. I suspect that's a pretty good compromise, Paul, to say we'd like to continue it, try the signage, and get a better count and see what happens.
Is there a motion on the floor to accept signage? Because I think that's something that this Board has to decide, and I'm not sure if we have to put it through the Planning Board also.
Well, we authorize signs on tree belts. So, I would, I actually would move that we continue the service with the PVTA as is until we can get a better information, perhaps down the road, and authorize the placement of signs for bus stops in Long Meadow at the discretion of the PVTA where they would place them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Contingent on approval of the building inspector.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. And we're going to change our agenda around a bit, since we have someone here from Bay Path College or slash university to discuss about a sign change.
Can I just make sure, Paul, if we could just let, if PVTA does put signs up, that they let Paul Healy know that?
No, let Paul Healy know. I thought there was discretion potentially.
Well, but if there's some issues that he might have, I'd just like it to make sure he knows where they're going.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jim Martin. I'm an attorney at Robinson-Dunham in Springfield. I live here in Long Meadow, and I'm here on behalf of Bay Path College tonight. With me is your former witness, Mike Jam Pietro, who testified so elegantly about the bus route, and I'm hopeful he'll be a strong witness for me tonight, as he was just prior. We are here tonight at the reference of the Planning Board in connection with the announcement that Bay Path College, as of July 1st, will be, has been designated and approved and accredited to be Bay Path University. And that name change is being processed through all the legal channels that has to be done in order to put everyone on notice at the state registry and Secretary of State and documents that Bay Path will be a university. And it's an exciting step for Bay Path as it launches its online programs and as launches its advanced degree programs, particularly the Physicians Assistant Program and the Occupational Therapy Programs. But in, part of that is to, branding is to designate, you know, signage where necessary to let the community and let the student population, let visitors, and let everyone else know that it is the university. And by way of history, and I don't know what the Planning Board forwarded to you, if anything, that was filed with the Planning Board, I have a brief memo that I can distribute with some documents attached, if I can approach you here. One person to have to share, but... It was addressed to the Planning Board, because back in 2011, following this Board's approval to move forward with the construction of a new entryway for Bay Path College at the time, we then went to the Planning Board and went through site design review, even though the issue that we were addressing really wasn't covered by the zoning bylaws. But for transparency purposes and inconsistent with the vote that this Board took to go to the Planning Board, we did so. And obtained unanimous approval for site, on-site design review to construct the new entryway for Bay Path College. And I hope this Board, residents here, receive the same information that the colleges received. They did, I think, a splendid job. It's a very attractive entrance. I think it accomplishes what the college wanted to, was that people aren't driving up and down Long Meadow Street saying, where do I go? up and down Long Meadow Street saying, where do I go to come in? I'm a visitor, I'm a new student, how do I get there? And this clearly, you know, denotes, uh, the main entrance. Uh, and so, uh, it was, the entry was, uh, built in accordance with the, the plans that were submitted at the time to the planning board. Uh, we now come for you at the request of the planning board, uh, to simply request that we change the lettering from Bay Path College to Bay Path University. And I do have some better photos than the Xeroxes that were attached. Have those for the record.
Pass them around. Thank you.
And, uh, here's a couple comparative photos. And so, just, uh, to refresh anyone's recollection, uh, who participated and hasn't, uh, had a chance to review this or anyone new, um, consistent with moving forward, since this location, uh, uh, in front of Bay Path is actually has the, one of the largest tree belts in the town. And so, uh, as part of this process, um, we, uh, agreed, uh, to enter into a license agreement with the town of Long Meadow, which was approved by the selectmen following approval by, uh, the planning board. Uh, and that license agreement was executed, uh, and that provided, uh, the college the ability to construct this entryway and, um, uh, put their name on the entryway, uh, in exchange for which Bay Path agreed to do quite a bit of work that DPW wanted it for drainage and, uh, piping in that area and some reconstruction, and agreed to maintain all of that, uh, drainage work that was done there and have, and has done so since it was constructed. So, uh, it was, uh, obviously a win-win for both entities. Um, so, that, when we approached the planning board about going back, saying, you know, your site design review approved the plan, we're technically changing the plan because the plan had the lettering across it that said Bay Path College instead of Bay Path University. Uh, the planning board said, well, we're told now that, oh, by the way, the license agreement was reviewed by town council as well before it was signed by you. Uh, we're told by now that all signage on public property has to go back to the selectmen. So, um, the planning board, at least as it was told to me, was if the selectmen are okay with it, you know, that's where you need to go. So, uh, we're here today really to say we're going to spread out the letters. Uh, it's sort of like, uh, what's that game Wheel of Fortune? We're picking a few more vowels and consonants up and extending the name, uh, but really nothing more than that. And, you know, a local company, Agnoli Sign, is going to replace the lettering. Uh, and, uh, they'd like to have it in place, uh, so that the work can be done, uh, so on July first, the proper name will be on the entryway. So really, that's a summary of the history and the request and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions or, uh, issues that need to be addressed.
Planning board is waiting for approval from the select board. Is that right?
That is correct. In fact, I, I believe Walter said, it's out of our hands now. We approved it, that's built. It's a, they, you know, so go back to the selectmen if you want to change the letters. If they approve it, you're all set.
Then I would move that the select board approved the sign as changed from Bay Path College to Bay Path University.
Is there a second? Any discussion or further questions for?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure I have the, this, questions or something, but I, I think that one thing, I think, Mr. Martin, I, my recollection of the signage and what's happened relative to the DPW is different from what you said. I just wanted to state that for the record. The relationship between the DPW and how much Bay Path did is, is different in my understanding. That's all, you know, I'm not going to argue it. It's not worth arguing. I just believe that was different. The, the, the approval of the signage originally and the process now, you know, and, and clearly, I, I don't oppose the, the lettering. This is insignificant, we're going to approve this thing. But it gives us a, a, an opportunity to discuss with Bay Path College and get Bay Path College in here to talk about all the things that we, we'd like to talk about Bay Path with. And I, and, and it's probably not germane to the, the signage, but the fact is that we have, uh, an ongoing degree of, of things that go on between the town and Bay Path that never seem to get discussed and never seem to get resolved to the, to the desires and the, and the outcome of, of the town of Long Meadow. And so every time we turn around, we grant what I see to be a pretty significant variance on our, on, on our, uh, tree belt bylaws to put up what I think is a lovely and beautiful and appropriate, uh, sign and, and wall. And, and then we go back and we, we make some changes to it, whatever we need to do. But when the town comes to Bay Path and is looking for assistance, it doesn't go as easily as I'd like it to. And, and, and that's really my comment. Now, you know, I, I, we can get into specifics, but this is neither the, the time or the place to do that necessarily. But I think it, we need to, for the record, say that the town has been pretty, pretty good in agreeing to the issues that Bay Path College has needed to do to promote their marketing and promote the, the college. And clearly, uh, we, we'd like to make sure that, that it goes both ways as we move to the future. I think that's the limit of-
And I want to say, when I've sat down and worked with Bay Path College slash University, I think I've had some very good discussions and been cooperative. So if there's some issues, why don't we make a list and we'll put in an agenda item and then have you in and we can discuss if there's something specifically that we need to, so.
Just, uh, if I may, Mark, I've had regular and ongoing communication with, uh, the town manager on occasion, with Paul. Uh, you know, we believe we've met every request that's been asked of us. There's some things pending, but, uh, those haven't lingered. And so, uh, I'd love to meet with you and, uh, and have others who are, are needed around the table and address anything that you feel has gone unaddressed.
And it may be simply a communications issue that's not getting written back to the cause.
Could be.
And so what we'll do is we'll be sure to have a list of what specifically we're looking to talk about. We'll invite you back in.
Be great.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the sign? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Well, thank you very much.
We got it. Thank you very much. And why don't we give these back to you? They're lovely pictures. And congratulations on the university designation and all the other new programs. They're very exciting. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. All right, so we jumped around a bit and why don't we go back to the minutes, um, approval of the minutes of May fifth, the regular meeting? And I believe you had some corrections?
Uh, I distributed the corrections just because I didn't want to have to go through them one by one. But I, I, I'd move that we approved the May twelfth special meeting minutes as corrected.
Okay. Any discussion on the minutes or the corrections that were put in? Paul?
I just, I just didn't know if there was a typo, uh, dealt with swearing in the witness for testimony during the dog hearing? Just the twelfth?
Yeah.
I was asking May fifth, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, we went.
Say that again, Paul?
Did you, did you get the one where they called-
I'm on the wrong seven minutes.
And you started with the twelve.
No, sorry. I didn't see if anybody caught the one where it was President Angelis instead of-
Where's that?
Well, that could have been purposeful, Rash. It might not have been-
Yeah, I think it was.
That I'm not president. I think that's what he's mocking. Next up, we see you.
I thought that's a bump, that's a bump up the road, President.
That'd be bump up the-
And of course, there is one correction on his correction, but the spelling, you'll pick up on that. And that's precessing or pressing. Yes, that's what I thought. I was going to go to my visar.
Well, Marie, our, our minutes, excuse me, our agenda says approve the May fifth minutes, but what we got distributed is the twelfth and the fourteenth.
No, I got the fifth.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. You got the fifth and the twelfth. You're right. I'm sorry.
Oh, any other changes on the minutes or the, okay, all those in favor?
For the twelve.
For the twelve.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, abstaining? Alex? All right, so the, those minutes are done. If you have any, do you have a copy of the amended minutes? I'll pass those to him.
I emailed them to you.
Oh, you did email them?
Yes.
Do you want a copy, a hard copy?
Sure.
Okay. And now we'll go back to the minutes.
How will we approve the, uh, minutes of Monday, May fifth, uh, regular meeting as corrected?
Second.
Okay, now discussion. And you had Paul, where was it?
Actually, there's, there's two things. Under Town Moderator, probably on page two, Mike Callock, Callock is spelled C-A-L-L-O-C-K.
No one could give me a, no one could give me a spelling.
His name's spelt with a K, isn't it?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. K-A-L-L-O-C-K.
That's what I caught that one too, yeah.
I, no one gave, no one could give me a spelling of the last name.
Okay. That's all right. It's a, it's a difficult one to spell, so it's-
So I apologize for that.
That's fine. And-
And then under swearing of the witness, we have, uh, under the dog complaint hearing, page three, I guess?
Yes.
We have Mrs. Connolly commended, I guess it's supposed to be commented, that she wished, you know?
Commented.
She could have commented. We'll have to go back and look at the tape.
All right. Any other corrections or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you very much.
Marie, could I mention one thing? The, the quality of the notes or the minutes now is phenomenal. I mean, they're, you're, you're catching everything. I, I think that's what sparks and what's interesting, you're catching everything.
Yes.
So I, I congratulate you on keeping up with us.
And many times, the amended minutes are actually correcting what we say. That makes it better. You're writing exactly what I'm saying sometimes.
And you can always depend on Mr. Gold looking over the minutes very closely.
Yes, to correct our grammar. So thank you. I think we should commend her. You are doing a phenomenal job.
Phenomenal job.
Okay. Can I make a motion to approve the block party request based on the recommendation of the police chief?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. You want to plow right through, Paul? We're now at the select board meeting schedule?
Yeah. Um, the only, I, I make a motion to approve the meeting schedule as outlined. I don't, I mean, I looked at it, the dates didn't seem, we have the first and third Monday, unless there's a holiday. Um, I don't see anything, no comments, or I don't see anything that's out of place or anything, so I don't know if everybody's looked at.
Do we need a motion to-
I made a motion to approve the meeting dates.
Second.
And any discussion? I know we can always change these as we go along. This is just to get people feeling-
I just had a question. I recall last year, didn't, didn't we approve the schedule once the new board was reconstituted? I, I know it probably won't matter, but, but isn't that how we did it last year?
No, actually, I think we did it ahead of time.
I don't think it's going to make a difference. I mean, typically, we meet on the first and third Mondays, unless there's a holiday, right?
But, I mean, but I, I remember a week or two after I got on board.
And it could have been, it could have just been a schedule, an issue of when it was on the agenda more than anything.
Right, right. I mean, I, I would just think that if, if it were possible that there be a new lineup, then the new board ought to decide it. But I don't think it matters in this case.
Since I think the, the election's going to-
Well, there's a sticker campaign. You can bring it forward again in June.
You never know.
You can bring it up in June again. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And moving on to the fall meeting date, it's, again, it might appear a little early, but I think it makes it easier for you to start preparing.
Well, it's not just, it's, it's one is the preparing, but the other thing is actually reserving the, the high school at this point in time. They're, they're booking for the fall, they're actually booking for next spring already.
Wow.
So we do have a couple of dates that we have reservations on. And if we can narrow those dates down, we could free up some of the dates. Uh, we currently have, is, in the memo, we have October twenty-eighth as a possibility. And I believe the first Tuesday in November is Election Day. The second Tuesday in November is Veterans Day. So we're looking at them with the third Tuesday in November, which would be the eighteenth. It is not the week of Thanksgiving, it is the week before Thanksgiving. So it would probably also work pretty well as a possibility. Um, personally, from the finance end, I'm recommending that we go to the eighteenth, only because we have a three-year revaluation process going on and we also have that measure and list valuation going on. And should any of that be held up, it, you know, it holds up our tax numbers and we just, I prepare, I prefer to go into town meeting with exact numbers of new growth certified as opposed to having some type of guesstimate open.
All right. Then I move that we set October, or November eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen as the special town meeting date.
Second.
Any further discussion on the fall? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And are you saying you prefer us to now set the spring town meeting?
If, if you could do the spring town meeting, again, we have the both Tues, the, both the first and the second Tuesday in May reserved at the high school again. Um, I know historically, we've been, we can go to as late as the second Tuesday and if this board so desires to make that, it would be good that we could free up that other Tuesday so the high school can do their booking.
And financially, where does the finance department prefer? Does it matter?
It, it, that's, you know, again, it, it's budget time. Uh, we're always looking for a little extra time when it, when it comes, comes to the budget, this board knows that. We have a strict timetable, um, getting the information out to the public, printed, so on and so forth. You know, certainly it would be better that, that second Tuesday, as we, again, have historically have had, and, and the second Tuesday in May would be preferable.
All right. Paul?
I move that we approve May twelfth, two thousand and fifteen as the date for our annual town election, or town meeting.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Any further discussion?
Is that the second?
It's the second Tuesday, it's the twelfth.
May twelfth?
May twelfth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, now we're moving on to the capital improvement policy and we have someone here from the Finance Committee. They've been working very hard on putting together the GFOA standards. It's, was a phenomenal effort that was put forward in our, uh, town report, which we have right here. As you can see, it's much bigger than what we'd seen before. You're going to find a lot more information on it. And part of the Finance Committee's work with that is to review all of our policies and try to bring them up to standard. So we really appreciate the hard work the Finance Department's put through so far and we have done one policy, which was the-
General.
Cash reserve.
General reserves.
General reserves. And so there's several that are being brought forward to us today and we'll start with the capital improvement policy. You want to just introduce yourself?
Yes, Peter Landon, Finance Committee.
And how do you spell your name?
Oh, I already got it.
You got it? Okay, thank you.
And the leadership, Ned Steiger, who's unable to make it here tonight, but was, was instrumental in getting to where we are with this. And Paul Pasturjik, CFO and the Capital Planning Committee in collaboration with us. We, we drafted a debt management policy for your review and a capital management policy. They're two pages in length, up from one page in the past. They needed renewal, so it's timely and a lot of things are going on. I'll just make a few comments about debt for opening. Uh, debt, this is very unleveraged town to the point where we started financing a school bond for the high school. And at this current juncture, with expenditures of the town and the general fund excluding the enterprise funds at fifty-two million, seven hundred thousand dollars, um, the general obligation debt outstanding for the town is fifty-six million dollars. And so it, that is about seven and a half percent of our, of general expenditures. So it's a significant level, and what this policy does is it caps that amount at a level that, in the opinion of the CFO and the people who worked on it, would maintain the bond rating of the town, which is out of 13 level scale, the third highest at AA2. So that's a big driver of how we thought about the metrics for debt management, and that's probably one of the key statistics, so. And it becomes more important, as I hear the discussions going on about an elder center, a DPW building, a middle school, and other capital projects that could be entertained by the town, they become part of long-term debt. And interest rates, we caught, having been on the bonding committee of the high school, we caught the bottom of the market. Going forward, those rates could be a little bit more significant. Another significant part of debt management policy is the amount of amortization of the debt. And this is the one area that we were singled out negatively by Moody's, was the amount of amortization that we had compared to averages of others in the bonding of the high school principal amount. So in the policy, we're recommending going forward, that 65% of the principal of any future bonding be amortized within 10 years. Right now, the average amortization for the town in the 10 years is 45% of the principal. The other aspects are that, and Paul Pastergic uses very effectively bond anticipation notes, and it's known as short-term debt in the marketplace, and that has lower issuance costs. It also used properly, can also have the amortization of the principal occur within the useful life of the equipment being financed, so. I don't know if you have any questions on that, we've left it for your deliberation. Paul and I are happy to answer any questions. Then we could do the capital, Maria, do the debt first, okay?
Yes, I have a question, I wanted you to clarify that the, we were at 60, we're 45% now because of the high school, but other than that.
And that, are we pretty good in our amortization, being within 10 years? Yeah, principal.
The other, yes. Paul, you want to comment?
Yeah, I'm gonna say, we are fairly aggressive in all aspects. Again, with the high school, though, you have to understand that the initial bond that we did, the first bonding that we did of about 27 million, we actually went out 28 years. So that really pushed a lot of debt beyond that 10-year level, and that's the only thing that's driving that factor, or making our percentages look bad, is that we did a 28-year bond, as opposed to 20 or something to that nature.
And that was to keep taxes down?
That was to keep taxes down, and again, it's not to say that, you know, with debt, you match up payments with the useful life. So, you know, there was some thought process there, that most of, you know, the building itself is gonna be longer than 28 years, 30 years. So there was some matching factor too, of that asset service with some payments at the same time.
Thank you. Any other question on the debt management policy?
In general, you know, now that we have these, I think. You know, what I like to, because we got these on Friday, is that obviously I would hope that we're not voting on them tonight, that we're gonna, you know, read them, bring them back to deliberate next week, or next meeting, rather. But with the debt management, when you look at percentages, and we say, okay, there's a certain amount outside of the 10-year range. One of the things, you know, we've done policies, we had an investment policy that suggested the board, the town, get rid of everything that was in government bonds, and then, now we had a change in the investment policy, let's go for a little bit higher yield and so forth. When you look at things, and I know numbers are, it's good to have numbers and say, here's where we want to be, and here's where we don't want to be, but when you look at a 28-year bond, when you look at the realities of it, the cost of that money to the town 28 years from now, to me, minimizes any impact of having that bond within 10 years. And having, saying that the town has to, or should stay, creating a policy saying the town should stay with the majority of the money within 10 years, with the, but it's not taken in conjunction with the levy limit that we have as a town. You know, the highest percentage levy limit, one of the highest in the Commonwealth, if not the highest for residential homes, that really doesn't, I don't think this policy really takes that into consideration. When you're looking at, how do you pay for these things for the homeowner? Our operational budget levy-wise is huge on this town. And I think to say that, to look at this by itself, in other words, that's what I'm suggesting, is look at it by itself, really doesn't tell the whole story, because there is a benefit to borrowing out for 28 years. Especially when the cost of that bond 28 years from now is not gonna be what it is today. I think it's actually very smart that we did, I mean, some of that might be dumb luck, but I'd rather have that than no luck. And I think the other thing we need to look at is what's the impact on the levy limit? And while the school is outside of the levy limit, because it's a debt exclusion override, I think we need to keep that more in consideration of what is the, what is the debt that we're putting on the sit and serre, rather than just the number of years of that debt. And that's all I would, all I'm suggesting, I'm not saying you need to change this policy, I'm just saying that you need to keep that in consideration when you're looking at that. The levy limit is huge in this town, and things like the high school are outside of it. So, and the other thing, well, that's the other policy, but I'm just saying, I think you need to look at it in a little bit broader perspective than just.
Yeah, and those are good points, Paul, and there are other metrics to look at it, and we encourage that in a GFOA disclosure, and other towns do that. And one of the metrics that brings the levy limit into consideration is the amount of debt, 56 million that we have, general obligations today, against a levy limit of about $2,200 million, is a ratio of 2.58. And with GFOA disclosure, you're able to put that in context of what are other towns' levy limit is, and what their debt is in a relationship, and you start to build a matrix, and your third, your other point, a metric that's useful, and I would recommend go in the great budget book that was put out under GFOA, is the third one, is debt per capita. I ran debt per capita against the numbers that Paul's provided, up to date on debt. And, you know, assuming 15,000 people live in the town, we're looking at $3,700 per capita debt. And you can look at that versus Sudbury, Concord, Springfield, and every other community in the state, through the data available. If it's per household, whether there are 4,500 households, 5,000 households, you're looking at $11,200 per household debt of the town. So, those metrics, if you put all three against each other, you would get a better picture and a mosaic, and, but the, the really, where the rubber hits the road on all this, is the bond rating agencies, they know these numbers back and forth, and they know every community and the profile of demographics. They're given a ton of credit of the, because of the demographics alone, and the ability to pay. That is not available to many other communities, so.
Mark?
Couple of things. By the way, Peter, thank you and the Finance Committee for coming up with this kind of stuff, it's very helpful to us. Just, one of the things that concerns me about policies is that for every time you have a policy, there's a reason to try to go outside the policy, and.
And one of the, specifically talking about this 65% amortization, which basically says we should be bonding shorter rather than longer, I think is, is kinds of things it approaches, is that we end up trying to, for whether it's political reasons or whatever, we make promises that we then have to try to keep through our bonding policy. And specifically, when we look at the school project, I remember when we were going through the bonding, Paul, because I was sitting on that subcommittee with you, you know, we kept saying, the promise was $1.46, that, you know, that would be the amount that would impact our tax, and we had to, we were working because, in the process of approving the school, the statement was, it'll cost the average homeowner $350 a year, and that's based on a certain number of years. And that, I think, went a long way toward potentially, you know, getting people to vote for this, because they thought it would cost them $350 a year, as opposed to costing them $500 a year, or $700, if we had a policy that says, hey, we gotta amortize it over a shorter period of time. And so, I'm a little bit concerned that we, that we adopt the policy, but then we're gonna go right along and say what we're gonna say to make the payment of whatever bond we want in the future, to be more palatable on it. So I think that's, that issue is somewhat of a concern to me. The other issue that's a little bit of a concern is, in this policy, it also says that we should be spending about 3% of our overall budget for bonding or debt.
When we get to the capital policy, yes.
Well, but it was tied in, I think, because it said, that anytime we don't spend 3%, we will move the rest of it into the capital budget.
That's, yes, we use the best practices, but you looked at many communities who had those features, that if you ever got to that point in time, which I don't see for a long, it's, that, instead of putting a money aside, if you became totally unleveraged with no debt, and you dropped below 3% debt service, principal interest, to build a reserve for future capital is most likely, is what the concept is.
Right, and I understand that, but one of the things that concerns me is that, I believe we should be writing a policy for the long haul, recognizing we can change policies next month if we wanted to, but, but because of the economic conditions that the US economy is in today, you know, there can be changes to the economy. I mean, we could go into, you know, higher inflation periods or lower inflation periods. We certainly have been, even very recently, in situations where labor costs in the town have, or medical care costs, or some particular budget costs have gotten to the point where, or have been at the point where, you know, if we had that additional money, we'd have preferred to use it for that use, and not necessarily force ourselves to put it into capital improvements. Clearly, today, we believe that we're, you know, we're behind in our capital improvements program, and we need to do that. But five years from now, you know, we could find that we really need to be paying for some unknown there. And so, the concept of having a policy that directs variances from the policy in a particular area, is something I might want to consider, is having this talk when we review this at a later point. I'm not saying it's a lousy idea, it's just a different idea.
We talked about, a couple of times, many times about it, and, see, Paul, you got any comments? Because I know you were active in those discussions.
Again, that 3%, I mean, I, I kind of agree with the policy as is, a 3% is, I mean, one, the GFOA or the rating agencies, if you don't have any debt on the books, are gonna criticize you. That they do want, or they feel that a certain level of debt is addressing your infrastructure needs and your capital needs. The 3% amount, if it's not met, again, it would go into a capital stabilization fund, so we would still be maintaining a level of capital improvements to a certain degree. So, I mean, I thought it was a fairly reasonable approach to take, and 3%, I don't see us dropping that low in the foreseeable future, given the debt service that we currently have outstanding at this point in time. So, you're right, it may affect us, but it's gonna be 15, 20 years, if at all, that this might come into play.
Any other questions? Alex?
Now, in this policy, you, there's a talk about a 10 to 12% limit of gross debt. Am I getting that right? 10 to 12% of.
Of your payments, of the annual payments relative to the total expenditures of the town. So the total expenditures account, Alex, are $53 million in the general fund, and you're looking at 3.7 million in the 2015 budget in principal interest expense. So, as a percentage, that's where it is, 7. And we're saying, you got room to go before you threaten the bond rating. Under that metric alone, would be up to 10 to 12%. And that's a range, and it is very common, because we did, as I said, we use best practices. I got, you know, eight policies of very well-managed towns in front of me, and that's a commonly used number. Ones with higher bond ratings, and there are some, believe it or not, in the Commonwealth, you know, would have maybe a different number.
Yep. Question I had, had to do with your comment. As long metal being unleveraged, relatively unleveraged?
Yep.
Okay. So, I take it you're addressing the gap between the 10 to 12 and the 7 and 1/2 that we're at now?
Correct.
And what, where do you think we stack up relative to other towns in Massachusetts?
Paul, you seen that data?
I have not, I would guess that we're probably somewhere in the middle.
Okay.
That would be my guess, but I haven't, it's a guess. All it is, is a guess.
So we get 50% reimbursement from the MSBA, you get 90% going in all your urban areas where their demographics are different, so.
45%.
Yeah, so 45, and it's a matter of general obligation debt going forward. You know, I don't know, if you looked at the most probable expenses at DPW, elder, facility, middle school, what kind of reimbursement from the state do you get, pick up on those kinds of projects?
The only one would probably be the school project.
School, the rest is 100% on our nickel, so. So you could, I was trying to answer your question, Alex, was think about how much more debt could you have on your books if we're at 56 million now, to get to that number? And it's in the ballpark of 35, 40 million in additional debt.
Right. I mean, I guess, you know, I mean, if we're gonna set down 10 to 12% as a good number, I mean, I guess, something that would be useful for me to think about would be, you know, what is, how do we stack up relative, you know, is that a lot or is that a little? The sense that I've gotten over the last few years, people who know more about it than I do, is that we have relatively low levels of debt for our town. And so when I see the 10 to 12%, it kind of feels like we're sort of closer to getting up to that limit than we are not. And, you know, so I guess where.
We get the 10 to 12% from Moody's.
Okay, all right.
And to maintain a AA2 rating.
Okay.
So if you push the outside of that, you're gonna get potentially downgraded.
So this is really, this is really driven by the bond rating?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wanted to comment that Richard and I attended the Finance Committee conference, and that was fascinating. And what I thought was so important about putting these policies together, is this is all best practices, and my understanding is this is how we get to, is it Northborough has the AAA? Who has a AAA in?
The big one, Weston, Wellesley.
Yeah, and so.
I don't know, Sudbury does or not, but Concord.
And to get there.
Northborough, probably not. I would think they're in their same league, but.
I'm not sure what they're in.
But I remember, to get there, we have to have, the GFOA, putting in new policies like this, this can actually get us to a better bond rating, and that's what I thought was important.
In those towns, they're growth factor, you know, they're diversified, industrial, commercial, and they got land. And they're in a sweet spot at 495 in Mass Pike. So, got the opposite land in that positioning.
Any other questions, yeah?
If I can, just one comment, Alex, with regard to your question, that 10 to 12%, just note that it's an amount not to exceed, that that's more of the ceiling that we've put up there. And I do have the standard and poor's ratios that they look at for debt service as a percentage of expenditures. The moderate level is between 8 and 15%. So that's where we're kind of shooting at, and then an elevated level would be 15 to 20. Anything below 8% is almost considered low. So again, we're, according to their ratios, we're probably just at the upper end of the lower level.
Paul?
Yeah, I just, again, as we're gonna talk about this, hopefully at the next meeting as well, I'd like some thoughts for the board to keep in mind, is that the Moody's and Standard and Poor's rate, and both of those agencies lost a lot of credibility in the financial crash of 2008, where they were rating everybody and their mother at AAA and above, or AA and above, corporations, I mean. So, I would think that what we would need to do as a town is manage the money for the financial health of the town, and not to manage to a rating agency. Rating agencies can change their own parameters without dealing with what we have here. And all of it is relative, because not one of the rating agencies right now is penalizing towns for OPEB, or lack of OPEB funding. Eventually, it'll come. But, so I really think we need to look at the financial health of the community, not just debt, but the property taxes as well, because there's things that were proven for debt that are paid for out of the operational budget, and then there's things that are outside of the tax levy, as I said. But I think more importantly is, you know, we're saying we're under-leveraged, but we may be, but we also could also say that we're overtaxed property value-wise. So I think, all I'm saying is, you gotta take it in perspective. I think the numbers, anybody can take a number and look at it and say, there's a target, and we're well below it. But financially healthy-wise, health-wise for the community, we might never get to that 8 to 10% number, and still remain within levy limits and things like that, or risk financial harm to the homeowners, and cause people to leave, based on the tax rates that we're applying to them. So, all I'm saying is, look at, there's a few considerations to look at besides Moody's and Standard and Poor's, and it only pertains to new bond issues. The bonds that are already out there and rated, it has nothing to do with the town's interest rate. Those are already done. So the 56 million we have out there, we could issue $100 million worth of debt tomorrow, and it's not gonna affect the town in terms of the credibility for those bonds. Now, they might fall in value to the people that hold them, but it's not gonna affect the town. We still have to pay them, we still get the same interest rate, that doesn't change. It's for the new issues that go forward.
Paul?
Again, Paul, I agree that, you know, we need to watch what the tax rate becomes. I think anytime that we do a debt service that is debt-excluded, we always look at the tax rate, and we always try to manage that. I mean, even with the water and sewer rates, we do that. The other thing to remember too, is that there are some issues that are within the debt limit, that they're not really gonna have effect on the tax rate, but they will have an effect on these ratios. You know, the prime example is, we just approved that $940,000 drainage issue last Tuesday. That will not be debt-excluded, but it will become a part of our debt service very shortly, and it's within the tax rate. So just, again, there's also that aspect of it.
Alex?
So, just to follow up on Paul's comment, am I correct in understanding what you're saying, Paul, as an argument in favor of higher levels of debt as a way to have lower levels of taxation currently?
No, that's not what I said.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
All I said was, you know, we have to keep in mind that the levy limit we have, our tax rate, is one of the highest in the state, if not the highest, for residential property owners. And Richard Shaker says, I think it's the highest for residential, second highest, okay, in the state. And I think when you look at, so, even other communities might have, might be more towards that eight to ten percent level, might have a lower property tax rate. And I'm saying that, that, the financial health of the town, not just an eight to ten percent target on debt, is what we should be looking at. I don't think you can go further into debt exclusion and lower the tax rate for the town. Maybe you can, but I don't, I don't know. So, my point is, what I was looking at is the financial health, which has to be a balance of those things.
And the rating agencies are starting to look at the combination of, Paul and I were looking at this today, of the OPEB obligation and the pension plan underfunded obligation, and combining that with your debt service, and they have, they call out the fixed ratio. The fixed ratio for Long Meadow is about nine percent of our general expenditures at this time. So, that OPEB is not fully factored in at this time, the funding of retiree healthcare. But the rating agencies have signaled, and Gatsby, the accounting supervisor has said they're going to put on your balance sheet, your retiree healthcare debt, and that totally and dramatically changes the nature of our balance sheet.
I'd like to go back to what I think the Finance Committee's done, which is, you looked across the Commonwealth for what were the best practices that were out there in regards to these three policies, debt management and capital policy statement, and in, well, those are the only two we're looking at today.
Yes.
And so, what, when everyone goes through and starts analyzing these before we get into really digging out the various pieces, please send questions or comments directly to the Finance Committee. They've spent a lot of hours on these, and there might be background or reasons on why they really picked certain factors and why there are changes, because it's, I think it's...
Copy of all the subject, too.
With, yes, copy to our CFO, because it is going to be a complicated decision, because it's, like you said, many factors are going into the various elements, and I think there's a lot of work that's been done on this. So, I think we're probably going to need several weeks to spend some time looking at it, and we'll figure out when we can get it next on the agenda. Alex, did you want to ask one more question?
Well, I mean, I guess since we're in the mode of deliberating, I mean, one of the, I was talking to somebody, again, who has more background in this than I do, but I like to listen to people who know more than I do. He was suggesting that we're in a period of low-interest rates. We have a lot of capital needs, so corporation in that circumstance might take on a lot of debt and address those capital needs. But, you know, we seem not to be willing to do that. And, I mean, it seems like as we're discussing this policy, sort of a big-picture decision like that, we ought to be thinking about it. You know, because, you know, we talk about capital, you know, Richard's done a great job talking about that, and I remember Mark saying that this isn't really a capital problem or infrastructure problem, it's a money problem, you know, where are we going to get that money? And, you know, maybe, you know, this would be the time to think about taking on all of these capital needs in a comprehensive way while interest rates are low. I mean, I think that's a, that's a good thing to be talking about right now.
I think that was discussed during the budget discussion. Mark?
Alex, you're right. And not only is it discussed during the budget, it was discussed during the high school project and a bunch of other things. And I'm going to take that to its extreme, which is then now going to be wrong, but, you know, because the problem with borrowing now, even at slow interest rates, is you've got to start paying back. The ideal world would be borrow like crazy and defer all your paybacks. That's what got us into the national, you know, financial crisis in two thousand and eight, is everybody's borrowing money on their mortgage and paying interest-only rates because the interests were so low and deferring it. But if, in fact, the town could stomach the payments, I mean, we're banning now, our bond anticipation of point seven six or something, is that the...
Usually, that's, usually, that's in point five.
I mean, you know, basically, we're getting the money for, the problem is, we still have to pay it back. I mean, you know, I would think that if we really had the money, and we weren't either at our levy limit, or people in town weren't opposed to, and I think the general opposition is, don't go out and run Prop two and a half overrides, you know, we could borrow an awful lot of money at very low interest rates.
Put maturity on that, Paul. A year?
Yeah.
So, you're basically a variable rate instrument, and you're subject to interest.
I understand, Peter. The problem is, but even, even our bonding for the high school was relative, you know, on a historical basis, was a relatively manageable thing. And, you know, I remember at the time, we said something like, taking our tax rate up two and a half percent, at the end, I hope people at home don't hold me, but at the end of our, at the end of that bond, our tax rate could be sixty-four dollars, you know, and we're worried about a dollar forty-six on, now, a dollar forty-six on twenty-two dollars, we're worried about, twenty-six dollars, we're worried about. But a dollar forty-six on sixty-four dollars, it'd be like a, you know, insignificant amount. I think that's what you were referring to, the long-term debt. So, Alex, your point is well-taken. The problem is, we've got to pay it back, and I don't know a way to get our cake and eat it, too.
Well, and I guess, you know, that's where the conversation, you know, because you mentioned the willingness of people to pay back, or, and I think that's where we come into play, to try to make that pitch to people to say how important these infrastructure needs are or are not, and whether, I mean, because, fact is, most people aren't thinking about it that concretely and that deeply. That's why they elected us.
May I comment on the capital policy, because we, just a couple summary bullet points that have germane, and because what we spend on our operating budget is very low compared to these best practices you see in other towns. And Ned Steger wrote eloquently about it to the end of the meeting, if you read what was in the handout there. And what the experience we saw was not two percent, which would put you in a position where you do need to use leverage ahead of that of others who might put four percent or five percent into capital out of their operating budget. And so, that's where capital and debt management, you know, are hand in glove. We almost wanted to write one policy, and we voted to writing two policies because we thought we'd be too aggressive to put them into one. But, and there's a third one that's hand in glove, which Paul brought up early, which is the capital stabilization. So, there's a lot of ways to dice this, and one of the ways we've diced it, and we've put the pressure on more bonding, whether it's short-term or longer-term, by underfunding the capital needs in the operating budget. And that, this policy is intended to correct. We did it in a modest way. We didn't go to best-practice towns. We went to two to three percent. And we asked that the discretion of the select board be considered, because we do have a lot of, you have a lot, we all have a lot of competing needs.
I think we had this discussion during the budget session in that we came in, I believe, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars under the levy limit, and it was recommended we could then use that to bond and leverage to investments in our sidewalks and roads. And this board decided they didn't want to bond future needs on the roads. So, and I had actually had an offline conversation with the Finance Committee, which said, you were a little uncomfortable with bonding that type of infrastructure, and that some towns who had aggressively done this were now seeing their capital being tied up for years on end to pay for those bonds. So, it is a discussion we've actually started to have on the board, and where we're going to lie on it in taking care of our backlog of needs, whether we're going to bond now when it's low or not. And this year, we decided not to do that. So, I think it's worth further discussion on, and I think it's interesting that you said, it's really so tied in, debt management, capital statement, and also what you're doing with your stabilization fund. So, we're just beginning the conversation. We appreciate everything that you've brought to the table on this, and helping us to understand by viewing it through other towns' eyes, too.
Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, I might have misheard you, but we actually took that levy limit and funded drainage projects with it, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm not sure, where did we put it in that, or do we put it in roads and sidewalks?
Well, we had earmarked it for the drainage project, but what was proposed, though, is we could have taken that one seventy-six, and instead of paying off the drainage project over a five-year period is what we're going to do, at this point in time, we could have taken that and done a larger bond and paid it off over a ten- or a fifteen-year period.
But we still used it for capital.
Still used it for capital.
And the other thing, Peter, and I don't know, and I've been to your meetings, and I've expressed my frustration with nobody listening to the fact that we are well above two percent on capital projects. When you look at something like the drainage projects, because it did not come out of capital, that's nine hundred thousand dollars for drainage projects that we don't count. We also don't count for capital projects done underwater and sewer. We're looking at the two percent, only that come out of general fund. And if you go back for at least the last seven or eight years, those numbers have been generally over four percent. And when you add up all of those projects, those are still capital, whether you're rebuilding a water line or sewer line, or a drainage project or sidewalks, that when you look at those, we're well above four percent on all of them. And I don't, and I'm, you know, changing the number in the budget, to me, isn't as important as recognizing, I think we need to do a better job of recognizing exactly what we're spending on capital. And I don't disagree, we need to do more. I just think that by not counting those other projects, that we're kind of shortchanging the work that we're doing.
That's a policy number, and if it's being stated, you know, Paul ran a fifteen-year history on major capital items, sidewalks, pavement, drainage, schools, et cetera, and it's a fascinating study, and that's encouraged in these policies to get that historical data, because some of these towns do trend, and that would pick up that we're doing a lot better than stated.
Well, I know we're doing better than two percent.
Mark?
Peter, while you're here, one part of this capital project, the policy change recommends redefining what a capital project is. It's currently anything over ten thousand dollars and like, useful life of ten years, and you're suggesting it go to twenty-five thousand dollars with useful life of five years. Why the change?
Because hopefully, the use of free cash would be more aggressive and fund on the capital allocation and fund the smaller amounts for capital under twenty-five thousand from free cash is part and possible of policy.
I just, if I could follow up, Marie, with that, because one of the discussions we had probably about three or four years ago with capital was computers, and how they didn't meet the ten-year rule, for example. I mean, some, and I don't know if computers actually meet a five-year rule nowadays, but, so I don't know if, what the big difference is between that five and ten-year timeline. Pricewise, I don't have, I have less of an issue with the raise in the dollar amount, because I think that ten thousand dollar rules has been there for years. So, raising it from ten to twenty-five, I think, might make sense for inflationary, recognize inflation, but I don't know what the five years does to the ten years of what that would mean.
Would knock everything out under five, and, you know, your point's well-taken on IT, you know, the useful life is highly suspect, and...
But I think we tend to get, if we go five years, we tend to get more towards IT than with ten years of being further away, you know, IT doesn't last ten years, but you might have things like mainframes that are put into the budget that are expected to last for five years that might fall under capital now. And I don't even know if they cost twenty-five grand. I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't know, I don't know what we are, you know, bringing into the fold and moving out of the fold. And I think that's something to look at. I think that's not a bad, I don't have a problem with the dollar amount, I'm just concerned that if we go from ten years to five years, we bring in more things to look at under capital that might not be...
Probably a few things of IT that would make that threshold with five years, not many. I mean, obviously, PCs, you might have maybe a server. I'm not even sure of the life of that, but, you know, some of those, you know, the higher-end deals might make it.
That was my only comment. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. We'll be sure to have it on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks to Finance Committee. Good job.
All right. Next is the quarterly investment report.
You should have received the quarterly investment report for the period ending March thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, from the Treasurer's Office. Biggest thing to state is that we are in compliance with the policy. Some of those policy compliance issues are, we have nothing invested in a period of five years or longer. We do not have five million dollars in any one bank at this point in time.
Unfortunately.
Everything is fully insured and/or collateralized, and all the banks that we are currently using, I have a green rating, which is the highest ranking of our rating agency that we use for banking, known as Vera Bank. Some of the highlights include the fact that we are internally financing the LHS project at this point in time. We're doing it to the tune of about a million dollars at this point in time, that we're doing it out of our funds. We will, I think in a week or so, I'm actually meeting with Clark Rauw, who's our financial advisor, and we probably will have to borrow, otherwise we're going to be penalized on our free cash estimate if we don't have funding in place to cover that internal financing. So, when we go to renew certain bond anticipation notes, expect to see something for the Long Meadow High School that will be taken out for probably six months between June and next December. Still waiting on the payment from the Federal Highway folks with that one point five million dollars, and that six hundred thousand dollars is still in limbo. We have not heard back from them at this point in time. And just the last tidbit of information is, we are getting a very favorable rate from Mount Washington Bank to the tune of about one point one-three percent, and it's not a term deposit or anything to that nature, it's a simple money market, and obviously, any excess money that we do have, we are putting it in that higher rate to grab whatever interest that we can at this point in time. The only other thing, too, is in regard to the storm damage, we are fully expecting that one point five to come in before June thirtieth. We will also have to borrow a small amount of money, I think it's the tune of about three hundred thousand, again, just so on our books, we don't have a deficit. If we do have a deficit, we are going to be penalized on our free cash estimate, and should we receive the six hundred thousand dollars, again, that would easily pay off the three hundred thousand dollars, and we'd actually, we'd be able to put that excess money back in the capital stabilization fund that was originally prescribed in one of the warrant articles that we took, the town share of money, where we were repaying some of our share of this. So, I don't know if there's any other questions.
Paul, just, you said both for the high school project, if we don't bond a little bit, and the federal highway storm, we'd get penalized on our free cash.
Part of the free cash estimate is not only your excess revenues or your unexpendant appropriations. The actual free cash calculation is made from the balance sheet, where they make the determination from our unreserved fund balance. And part of the calculation is that they penalize any community that is showing deficits in any accounts. And if we do not do the short-term borrowing in these particular cases, we are going to show deficits on our, on our books, because we do not have the internal financing in place. Again, as I mentioned, we're funding both of these right now out of the general fund. So, in the absence of that internal financing, we will, we will have deficits shown on our balance sheet. That's where they make the actual calculation from, and part of that is penalizing us, or would penalize us in that free cash calculation. So, the easy process, Mark, when we say that free cash is a, is a simple calculation from excess revenues or receipts turned back, that is the simple way of looking at it, and it comes very near that, that amount of money, because that actually affects your...
But it truly is the free cash balance of your checking account as opposed to just what got turned back from...
Exactly, exactly. There's an easy calculation, is a cross-check that the DOR actually uses to make sure that they're within a certain range from the actual calculation, but that actual calculation is made from our balance sheet, though.
I had a question on the six hundred still due on the storm. They should leave six hundred thousand, three hundred and forty-four, still due to the town. Is that, that we're expecting to get, or we still have to advocate and really push to get that?
Well, it would not hurt to advocate. It's still an amount that they have, and they're doing their auditing on, and have not made a determination on that number as of yet. Again, the chief, the fire chief did a lot of advocating to get that one point five coming our way, so as much as that will help, there is still some, that six hundred thousand is still out in limbo, and, you know, certainly, we've put it in with the expectation that it's going to be reimbursed by the, I think it's the state at this point in time, well, I'm sorry, the federal highway money. We're fully expecting it, they just haven't acted upon it. So, anything that can be done to advocate for it, obviously, is going to help us.
So, like some of the things that were done to push the other, we should get on the phone and try to get that going?
It will help.
Okay.
So, Marie, how do we go about doing that? I mean, six hundred thousand dollars is one of the biggest things we can do.
Is one of the biggest, exactly.
Things we can do here. Is that letters to Congressman Neal's office? Is it...
No, I understood Congressman Neal's office worked on that, and Senator Canderas's office worked to try to push that.
But is this federal funds, or is this, federal funds been paid to the state that the state's going to pass?
It's paperwork, right, that has to leave Boston?
It's not just paperwork. It's not paperwork.
I'm not quite sure who cuts...
I'm not quite sure who cuts the check, in all honesty. It's Federal Highway money, and whether that filters through the state or not, I'd have to ask Eric.
Yeah.
Um, but again, some push needs, or, you know, if it is made, it, it would be very helpful, then, you know, if we, if we didn't have to bu- borrow money as of June thirtieth, I mean, that'd be great. And if we had all this, again, we'd actually have our, that, if we had the six hundred thousand, we would have the storm fully paid off. You know, we went into reserves and we put reserves back in, so we, I mean, we weathered the storm, no pun intended, as far as the financial part of this, and would put an additional three hundred back in our reserves.
Can I ask for the next meeting? Can you, can you find out from Eric, please, where we need to advocate? And then for the next meeting, we can develop a letter that's signed by the board and maybe phone calls, whatever it is that action we, we take. But we need to know who we're directing it to before we shotgun it out there. Um, can I ask a question of Paul? Mr. Pasterzik, Hampton Savings Bank, uh, one of the numbers is two hundred fifty thousand dollars down, and it says FDIC DIF. I'm assuming that's a school building payment, the two fifty, since there's no other explanation, or is that not accurate? It's the third one down from under Hampton?
I see it. Um, no, it doesn't necessarily have to be, uh, it could just be one of our accounts, doesn't necessarily, I mean, it could just be one of our financing accounts that we have for operations. Um, I do not believe it is a, a school building account.
And then under the ambulance on, at the top, um, is that budgetary, meaning we took money out to place in the budget technically, or?
That, that, we have a, with the third-party billing, they actually make deposits i- in, in a bank, I believe, on the East Coast. So all this is, is basically, we're taking that money, we've transferred it into one of our other accounts, probably earning a higher interest rates.
And then the other thing that I, I'd like to ask, if possible, is there, out of this money here, what would you say percentage-wise, I'll take on our Bartholomew, is, um, school building money, for example? Is there a large portion of this, or a small portion?
Well, we're in the whole of a million dollars.
So we took whatever bond we have that's gone?
We have spent all our, our.
Okay, so this is.
Twenty-four million dollars is gone.
So, so what we're seeing here is more of our cash flow through the town?
Exactly.
Okay, that's, I just want to.
Yep, this is more of our own mu- I mean, with no special projects going on, the ten million dollars that we had one time, you know, when we borrowed for the storm. I, I mean, you may recall, one time we were looking for bank so we could meet the, the threshold of, of the investment policy, uh, because we can only have five million dollars in there, and, you know, all that money is gone.
Okay.
I mean, we, we were probably looking at fifty million dollars bottom line two, two years ago.
Okay, and then I have one more question. At the Council on Agent meetings, one of the things that kind of gets brought up in a repetitive nature, some of these accounts, um, that are under the Council on Agent, like the, the Dan Antonio Trust.
Yes.
Uh, and I'm not sure which one of these others are under their control, and they seem to have questions about the value, and, and at the last meeting that I was at, and Marie was there, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they were told that they couldn't get the value, the board. The, Emily said I can get the, the director said I can get the value, but I guess the board was looking for that, is, is there, is, is what, all these different funds that are, I understand Bartholomew's the town's money that they're managing, as that's categorized. All these other ones are specialized funds that were meant for, they have specific strings attached to them that they have to?
Right.
Okay, and the, does, so there's one labeled Council on Agent, and I know the Dan and Tony one was, one that was, um, bequeathed to them at the Council on Agent. Does that mean that when it was under those rules of, is it a municipal rule, or is it how it was bequeathed to them?
It was how it was, it was how it was given to the town.
Okay.
Certain stipulations that, that they would say it had to be used for Council on Agent purposes.
So none of these are under your control, so to speak?
Well, now, when you say control, they are in the custody of the Treasurer.
Right.
We have the cash in these accounts. All these monies are in the municipal financial software. So if, if there's anything, um, Emily should be able to go into the financial software and actually pick out the balances from the software.
Right, but let me, let me, they are not under the control, meaning that the, the town of Long Metal does ma- does not manage the disbursements. It is per the bequeufment of those monies.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to, 'cause I just think there's some confusion of, and maybe that's something we can clarify, I'm sure Emily can maybe further clarify it with you for the, for the COA Board, I mean, I just.
They, they have received a, a number of, of donations or, or, or again, requests that were specifically to be used for Council on Aging purposes.
Can I, just clarification, but I, I understand they're designated funds as such, in other words, for the purposes of, or for the benefit of.
Yeah.
But the dispersment of that fund, is that at the, at the approval of somebody who's not a town employee or a town official?
It basically says that they should be used for the benefit of the Council on Aging.
I, I got.
So if there is an approval, it would go through the normal approval process. Um, and I would think it would be the Board of Directors of the Council on Aging who would be making those types of determinations of how they wanted to use them.
But are, are they making recommendations, or are they making final, you know, final decisions on dispersing of the funds? In other words, you know, are?
I think both, for my, that's my.
Well, and, and that, that's my question, i- i- is that, you know, are these funds town funds now? You know, and, and I liken it to, 'cause I've got some experience in the, in the private sector of somebody who donates money. Okay, if you give money to a foundation for the express purposes of, like the Community Foundation of Western Mass, they get gifts for the express pur- for the benefit of, of the Boy Scouts, or something like that. You know, that, that the money doesn't get dispersed necessarily because the Boy Scouts want it dispersed. The Boy Scouts make a recommendation, but it's the, it's the Community Foundation of Western Massachusetts, 'cause the money was given to them, who disperses the money. So similarly, my question is, would it not be that the Council on Aging makes the request, but the town has to disperse the money?
Well, when you say, I guess when you say the town, who are you referring to as the town?
The, 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 the Treasurer makes dispersals, that the, the select board, but is, does there have to be a secondary level of approval? Or does the Council on Aging get, get, have the authority?
I would have to look at every big bequest to see what specifics are in there. I'm assuming for the most part, they are all written, that the funds are to be expended on behalf of the Council on Aging, and they don't necessarily specify whether it's the Board of Directors or, or the, the Select Board, as long as they expended on a Council on Aging type of expenditure. But all those expenditures would actually be made by the Treasurer through the warrant process. They are not expended directly, the Council on Aging does not cut a check.
Right.
The, the process is the warrant process, it would go through the accounting office for approval, and the check would be cut by the Treasurer and funded through these deposits.
Yeah, I guess my question, Paul, along, you know, the bottom line i- is, you know, is the, is the Council on Aging a recommending organization, or, you know, committee for the dispersance, or they a deciding committee for dispersment? So is the gift made to the town of Long Meadow for the benefit of the Council on Aging, and we're just using that? Or is it made to the Council on Aging, and we're just the, the holder of the money?
Yeah, I, I would have to look at this.
And each one you're saying may be different.
Each one may be different.
'Cause I think that's a very, very specific distinction that we need, you know, if the gift is to the town of Long Meadow for the benefit of, you know, of, of a particular agency, that's a very different way of saying the money goes to, and, and, and the other thing is, is my understanding is that the Council on Aging is a, is not an independent organization as such. You know, unlike if the money was given to Faloka for the benefit, you know, that's their money, that I think they even control.
They have their own checking account, and everything is there, they're completely independent.
But, you know, it's like giving money to the park department, you know, can you give money to the park department that's not really being given to the town? You can give money to the benefit of the park, park department, but I wonder.
Goes to the town, yeah.
But, and, and so why is the Council on Aging different from the park department or from any other department to that matter?
Could you get back to us?
Those are lots of questions.
Yeah, I, I, again, I would, I would have to look at those, um, accounts and actually how the, uh, the requests came into the town and what stipulations were applied.
And I, just to give you a very specific, I'm sorry, Alex, go ahead.
Alex.
I, I just wanted to go back to the storm damage for a minute. Um, so we're waiting for six hundred thousand dollars, and who's been managing, I mean, this has been obviously a long-term project. Who's, like, who's managing the chasing down of this money?
Eric Madison.
Okay, Eric, okay. Um, and it said in your memo that one, that he expected one point five million dollars by May fifteenth. Have we gotten that?
We have not.
Okay, so really, we're looking at two point one, that's hanging out.
We're looking at two point one, but we have a contract signed for that one point five.
And who's the contract with?
I believe it's with the state.
Okay. Um, and what, what is the total, are, are we gonna finally have a total cost of the town? 'Cause I imagine as this gets dragged out, that costs the town a little bit more money, 'cause we have to keep financing it, right?
Uh, I, I could prepare something that would, you know, give you a, a rough estimate that, you know, it was eleven point seven was the original cost.
Right, right.
We thought we were gonna have to pay two point four, um, we've already put up one point, you know, X. We benefited from the state when we did the original projections of us putting in two point four, we then benefited from the state by the state kicking in nine hundred thousand dollars. So our share then became, you know, one point five. I think of that one point five, we already appropriated one point two. Um, that's why I say if this extra six hundred comes in, we get our three hundred, plus everything would have been paid off already, and we would have received a little bit more, and we actually put in more than we would have allotted, again, from, mainly from the original projection, did not have money coming in from the state.
Right, right.
And again, they gave us nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, on this, but.
I mean, I guess that, I think, that people ought to know. I mean, like, you know, there are all these numbers that have been floating around.
I can come up with a fairly simplistic update, just to give you ballpark round numbers of, of how it originally was expected to come in, and how it is coming in at this point in time, what is actually received, and, and the expectation of, of the balance.
Okay.
Again, it's almost like the high school, we're still in flux, and what will come back on the six hundred?
Right.
Okay.
Didn't we say it would take a few years to clean it all up, so we're, we're almost into the third, finishing the third year?
I'm just thrilled we got the nine hundred from the state. Very happy.
Made a big, big difference.
Big difference. All right, uh, the next thing is signing the election warrant. Do we need to do that?
Do we need a motion for that?
I will pass that around, and I also have the, the block party.
Oh, that'd be great, thanks.
We approve the election warrant as proposed by the town clerk?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And they'll be passed down this way. And moving along to the casino mitigation costs update. Could you tell us, I know the Fall Town warrant, we had set aside a hundred thousand dollars for the costs, and I think we have a final numbers, don't we?
I don't have the final numbers from the consultants or anyone. The only thing that I can tell is, is within my ledgers, we've only expended forty-eight thousand dollars at this point in time.
We received a thing in the packet that had the, um, the fact that total expenditures were, did you see this one, seventy-seven, nine eighty-nine, okay?
Did not see that, sorry.
All right, um, I believe the town manager put that in the packet, and I guess he didn't pass that on to you. And he said the expenditures, he's expecting is seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand and fourteen cents, which, um, was, uh, so far saving us twenty-two thousand, ten dollars and eighty-six cents, uh, from our budgeted amount, and, um, he still has an amount that still needs to be paid, but I think that was the estimates where, where we were. And that included the two consultants, and, uh, the GPI, I guess, had some costs, 'cause they came and they did some testifying and extra workforce and municipal resources, and I believe the attorney's fees are in here also.
Right, I, that's one thing I didn't get, was there seemed to be some February, March, and April are not included on this sheet for the attorneys.
That's it.
Marie. Alex, you're right, and there were, I believe that the attorney's original bid only ran through mitigation and not through arbitration. There were gonna be additional fees for arbitration that aren't, aren't shown here.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that's exactly, but anyway, I mean, I, I think we're looking at a big chunk in addition, 'cause he was pretty, they were pretty busy the last three months.
Yes, so I guess we'll wait for the town manager to.
Right.
To be able to give us an update on that.
Well, the question is, our, our agreement with MGM calls for them to pay reasonable, reasonable costs for the process. And it's not dependent upon them getting a license, that payment date. And so I, my question is, I guess it's not quite, I presume we're gonna be submitting these to MGM then? Directly to get reimbursement?
My understanding, the attorney was preparing the paperwork for that.
But he's gotta have his own bill, and, and I'm sure he's quite aware of his own bills.
Yeah. So I guess we'll put this on for the next, um, meeting.
The casino mitigations update?
Yes. All right, so the next thing on our agenda was the Charter Commission. Now, I was bringing this back on, I know we've already discussed it, but, um, I wanted to bring it up again because of something that uh, I've come to realize this month, and it's, I've sort of been looking at it all year, and that is our committees' issues. Right now, we have, uh, put out advertisements, we've put notices in the paper asking people to please sign up for, um, committees and boards. Right now, even with people that have handed in their application, we're, the Audit Committee, there's three spaces available. Uh, Cable Advisory Committee, there's four vacancies. Capital Planning, two. Community Preservation, one, possibly two. Conservation Commission, three. Uh, Council of Aging Board of Directors, two. Um, Council, Cultural Council, two. Finance, which I know we don't do directly, is two. Historic District, four. Planning Board, we didn't even have someone sign up for the election. So there will be a opening there that will not be filled. And Housing Authority, um, is completed. Historic Commission, two. Parks and Recs, one. Recycling, two. Tree Committee, two. Now, a lot of these are not in the Charter, some are, and I think if we're going to look at what our relationships are with the committees, that with every year, as we reorganize, we struggle how we're going to work with the committees. And, uh, I think it's now time to sit down and look what's in the Charter, what's not in the Charter, and maybe reorganizing these committees and the relationship of the Select Board with the committees. I wanted to know what people thought about that. Mark.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to go back and look at this. I'm, I'm going through the Charter right now, that the Charter only talks about three committees, or organizations, I believe, and I'm trying to pin those down.
Well, they talk about finance, capital, I think is definitely in there, audit is.
Yeah, right, but they don't talk about Cultural Council, they don't talk about
No.
all the, all, all the committees that, that we're having trouble staffing.
Well, I thought if we had.
And, and those are all at the discretion of the, of, of the Select Board. And so it seems to me that, you know, we're taking out an elephant gun to, to kill a fly here if we want to address the issues of, of either having too many committees or having the wrong committees. It says here that, that there shall be other town committees as the town may establish by bylaw, by vote of town meeting, or as may otherwise be established by the Select Board or school committees. That's all it says. So there's an awful lot of ways besides a Charter commission, committee to address, address the issue. If it's, if it's tendence, I think that that's not the, not the right approach, 'cause what we're doing is, we're fundamentally changing the way we've, we're doing government, because we've got potentially a temporary situation of people having trouble getting people.
Well, I don't think it's temporary, and I thought we should really look at, and maybe form a subcommittee here, or have more discussions. Maybe we need to be combining Audit, Finance, Capital. Maybe we need to start being, uh, allowing Select Board members to be on committees. We can't do that according to the way the Charter is right now.
Select Board members can apply to committees if they want.
Not according to the Charter. I looked up at it last fall. We cannot, so in other words, if we wanted to say that, um, there will always be a member of the Select Board on Capital Planning, or on Finance, or on Conservation Commission, we can't do that. So right now, our, our communications and our interrelationship with the committees really goes back to the Charter. And that's why, I don't know if you want to start with a commit, subcommittee here, which decides what we really need to look for in the way of changes. Now, that's where we had discussed between a different committee and a commission, because a committee can decide, well, we want to make these changes to the Charter. We could do that through a town meeting. The only thing that we need the commission for is if we're going to change the composition of this board or of the town manager. But I'm willing to go with the commission, because I think it's so important that we really start to, to look on making some of these changes, because I've been on the board for three years, and we've been having trouble with filling the committees, and these are key committees that are very important. And, um, to the running of this town, and I think that the communication between the Select Board and these committees, since we can't really be part of it or have liaisons, it, that is a obstruction which I would like us to be able to really spend some time looking and refreshing the way that we have the structure. So that's why I brought up the idea of a charter commission again. Uh, because we had problems this year with, um, the audit committee and we really struggled to put people on it, and that's a vital committee. And capital planning now, we're down two. And when we, uh, we're trying to work with capital planning this year, it was very, very difficult. And, uh, these are extremely important committees, conservation, we're down three. And that's after a push and me making some phone calls, trying to get people on these committees. So I wanted to hear what everyone else's thoughts were on basically the committees and then also do we do the charter commission to try to deal with it? Yeah, Paul?
I, and I've said it before and I'm gonna say the same thing, if we, I, I really don't approve of cherry picking the charter. If we believe that the committees are not operating to the point where you wanna look at the charter, the charter commission, or at least two members of that charter commission, Mr. Wojcik and Mr. Okuti, were in the select board meeting talking about a review of the charter. And, and they, they were talking about a review of the whole charter and what's working, what's not working. That's a charter commission. And the reason I've heard that we don't want a charter commission is that we don't wanna change anything, because we don't know what's, we don't know anything that's not working. You just cited several committees that aren't necessarily working. And as Mark said, for most of those that you mentioned, you don't even have to, according to the charter, they're not even mentioned in the charter, uh, in terms of being established by the charter, let's put it that way. There are some specifically, like the audit committee that was there, but, um, I, I, if we wanna look at this, I think the fair thing to do is look at it and say, okay, what works, what doesn't work? I mean, is a five-member select board the best thing for the town or is a three-member select board or four or seven-member? We don't, we haven't, so if we're gonna look at whether we need an audit committee, a capital planning committee, and, uh, I, I think that there's no reason to, to try to cherry pick this in what, if we're gonna say one area doesn't work and, and then put the blinders on and say everything else is working fine, then that's not being honest, I think. I think that if we wanna do this, there should be a charter commission that looks at the whole thing, go through the town meeting process, go through, we, we need to find out whether town meeting is the right thing for, for the town of Long Meadow. Um, you know, fifty years ago was, it was good, forty years ago maybe, and today it's obviously, we, we've heard from every segment of the population that town meeting should be changed for an all-day Saturday thing. And then other, someone will come in and say, that's not gonna work, 'cause I have sports that weekend with my kids. So we, we haven't really examined it, and the way you examine it is with a charter commission. And I, I don't think there's anything wrong, if the charter commission's gonna go in there and look with eyes wide open and say, could something be improved? I think that's how it should be handled. I don't, I really don't think the select board should set up a committee to cherry pick what we think shouldn't be in the charter. And, and I would, I would be hard pressed to find, I've been on the board for eight years and every year there's been, every year there's been an issue with, with people on committees. Very rarely have we had a, a, a capital planning committee at full tilt for long periods of time. I mean, you know, here and there, we might've had a year or two where they had every member available. Um, I just think that we're, we're, we're trying to cherry pick what we might think it would be wrong with it, as opposed to saying, is there anything wrong? Or is there anything to be approved upon? That's what, I really think that's what a charter commission should do, is, is, is this what we have, the right thing, and can we approve upon it? That's, I think, the e, the smartest thing to do, but I've said that before.
Alex?
Um, I mean, I guess the prospect that Paul raises, sort of the thing that concerns me about a charter commission is, you know, the idea of fundamentally changing our form of government. Um, and I, I, to me, I think we're a long ways away from that case being made. Um, you know, with respect to the committees, I, I, you know, I think it is a problem that we have vacancies. Um, although, one of the things that my perception is that, you know, there's some committees that are popular and some that are not, you know? I mean, remember, we had an opening on the parks commission and I think we had four excellent candidates, uh, who wanted to be on that. And then versus the cable advisory committee, and, you know, I think maybe that's less popular because they don't have much power, you know? I mean, I wish we did have the power to set cable rates. Um, so I, I guess I'm a little more with Mark in sort of having a, you know, taking an elephant gun to, you know, that could have untold consequences to address something that I, I think can be addressed without changing the charter.
Yeah, well, what is the other way we can handle dealing with the concept of combining committees or changing the composition of the committees? Uh, because these are supposed to be advisory committees to the board and, which means we're supposed to be, you know, working with the committees.
Right.
And so how else would we approach that? Richard?
Yeah, I had, I had a question, or not a question, a kind of a remark on Alex's thing. It's not, you know, the commission is going to, whether it's commissioner, committee, they're gonna make recommendations and the voters of this community are gonna make the decision whether they want it or they don't want it. It's not the fact that the commission's gonna do anything. They're gonna study and they're gonna present, like anybody would present at town meeting, what their findings were and let the, the populist here make a determination. So I don't, I don't fear the commissioner or any of that, because it's gonna go through the same process it did originally when we were presented with the charter. And they voted to have a, a five-person board. I understand East Long Meadow's got a charter commission going this year. And I would imagine that they're looking at things, they may be trying to echo what we're doing. We don't know.
That's right.
You know, and, and I don't think there's any one set government that's perfect in every respect, I think, and we've been under this, what, for how many years, uh, ten? Eight?
Ten.
Ten? And we have not reviewed our charter since we went under. And it, it, practice itself said you should periodically review your whole charter. So I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think I'm as, I'm not leery of that because if the recommendation comes forward, it still goes to the populace to vote on it. It's not something that we're gonna decide, we can't do it. That has to be a vote of the will of the people, similar to what our town meeting vote is.
Right. I mean, I guess my concern is, see, I, I, I think about our form of government going back much further.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we've had town meeting, you know, this is, goes back to the Mayflower, you know? I mean, it's, uh, this is something that's fundamental, it's something special about New England towns. And I guarantee you that if you ever get rid of town meeting, you're not gonna get it back.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, so to me, I, I think you'd have to have a compelling case that the form of government isn't working. You know, there's something, you know, sort of along the lines of, you know, we change from the Articles of Confederation to our current constitution. You know, you had something that was just manifestly not working and, and I, I don't think we're anywhere close to that. So, uh, you know, to me, you know, changing the form of government is, is got to be done very conservatively.
Well, you know, the populace may actually want the representative form of government. I mean, that's a fairly, a very functional thing and I, in some respects, when you see what does happen at our town meetings, a representative form of government would likely touch more the citizenry. I mean, then you would have maybe a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty reps coming in that represented X amount of people. Uh, and that would, that would be a, a new form of communication and lobbying and whatever for the points, but it may, it actually may represent the populace of this community better than our current town meeting does. I can envision the town meeting that's like we have here is back when they had five or six hundred population and that you had three quarters of the people come in for the, because it was a social event. And now sadly, you're at the meetings like I am, we got two or three hundred people and we consider a fine meeting out of sixteen thousand or whatever our population that would be eligible to be in there. So we're not really truly represented that well now. It's a very small segment of our voting population regulates what's happening in the town. So I mean, there are, you know, most people like Aaron, even where there's five different forms of government available for our community.
Right.
So I think, I think it's, I'm not afraid of the process, I think it's a, it's a good process.
Yeah, um, Alex, you made a comment, you, you're assuming a charter commission would go in and change the form of government. If we're gonna hold true, when Mr. Landon was, uh, was, uh, one of the members of the charter commission, and they were before the select board when, I think we were a couple of years into it, because we were still working out MOUs with the school department, um, and the folks that came before us from the charter commission said, oh, we left it very vague for you guys to figure out. Um, they also said there should be a review of the charter every so often. And so I, I think if, if, that's, see, my fear is that's, by cherry picking, we already say, this is what we don't want in the charter, or we don't want in the government. And a charter commission should not be, obviously won't be a member of this board on there, for example, but a charter commission going there with eyes wide open, I would hope, and say, this works, this doesn't work, and maybe we should look to amend that. And as Mr. Foster said, the vote still goes back. It, it, I can't see it, I can't see a charter commission coming back and saying, we recommend getting rid of town meeting and then passing that town meeting. So I think it's inevitable, we're always gonna have town meeting, uh, just for that fact alone. So I, I, and, and I don't think that's necessarily the best form of government for the town of Long Meadow, but that's not, I'm not the one trying to be on the charter commission. So I think a charter commission review is looking at and say, to Marie's point, are these committees needed? Do you need a capital planning committee? Do you need an audit committee? The audit committee was specifically set up by the charter. So I think that the charter commission go back in and look at the whole structure and say, what do you need and what, you know, based on what we've seen for the last ten years? Is it, is it the right, they may come back and say, yeah, it's perfect, shut up, get over yourself and go forward. I mean, I, I don't know.
And what I would like to see is for us to actually start, we can make a commitment to a commission, but start, actually get the group together as a committee, because I understood commission must be elected.
Elected, voted in.
So we're talking a whole year down the road before we can actually get a commission together. And the work can begun, begin now in regards to issues such as there are parts of the charter that we know aren't quite working, they're, they're, uh, and this'll be a very simple way to begin it. So I would ask that we, if we have to say charter commission slash committee, something that allows this group to start working now and working towards possible recommendations that, um, the commission can then move forward on. But, um, I, I think we need the review. I think a lot of towns are doing the review and part of the review would be, do we combine some of these committees? What are the, uh, actual mission statements of these committees? Do we need an appropriations committee? I mean, there's all sorts of things out there, we could see what's working and not working. Mark?
Marie, the, I think the comment you made though speaks against the formation of a, of either a committee or a commission to begin with, because the comment was, we know it's not working, we see it. I think if, if we see some of the issues, then we have an obligation to move within the, the, the powers that the charter currently gives us to resolve those. You know, it clearly says, you know, in here, that we can, what, uh, such committees shall be monitored and dissolved as appropriate by their appointing authorities. That's section four, four of the, of the charter. We can monitor and dissolve a whole bunch of these committees if, if, if we think they're, they're necessary. And, you know, and we can do a lot of other things by bylaw, proposing bylaw changes. We're in a unique position to be able to propose that bylaw changes be, be considered by, by town meeting. And so, you know, because we're in a unique position to see some of the issues, I think it behooves us to start acting as the select board and not, not defer it to either a third-party com, committee or a commission who are gonna be independently elected people who may have a, a whole different perception of, of what's going on, that may not have the same perspective that, that, that we do. I, I think that the way to do it is to, to start with what we know are some issues and, and begin to address them internally through the, the, the powers that we currently have.
Uh, I wish we could, but this is a board that really has trouble coming to a consensus.
So, so your answer is, so let's defer it to a third, to an outside group? I mean, that, you know, that, who's, who, who isn't involved in this on a day-to-day basis? If, if, you know, as they say, who better to know the issues than us? And if you say that somebody out there is better to know the issue, it's probably because they have a, a, a particular area that they, that they, they wanna work on. I mean, I just think that, that, you know, if, if we've got issues, we, we ought to address them.
I, I mean, I agree, and, you know, for example, cable advisory committee. I mean, why can't we discuss that if that's not needed or we can't enough people? I mean, it hasn't been on the agenda in the last year, as far as I know.
Except that that one's required by state law, number one.
Okay.
And number two, they have no authority at all.
Well, and that's why.
They can't negotiate, they don't, they, they have no authority.
So, I mean, that's my point, that, that's why people don't wanna do it, because they can't, they, people.
They can't affect change.
People want to be on a committee to make a difference. And, and, you know, that's why they're interested in, you know, the parks commission, because they can see they're making a difference. You know, I mean, to me, you know, uh, you know, changing the missions of some of these committees makes sense, but I mean, that's tweaking and, and changing along the edges.
But I think a lot of it is the question is, what is our relationship with these committees? And if you sit here and you talk to these five members of this board and you also talk to those boards, there's a different perception there.
Well, Marie, that's our problem, because I've gone, I can go back four years when I, I've sat here many times and I'm the only one who asks any questions of people coming before us to be on a committee, because the, the, the criteria for joining committee is signing your name and having a pulse, as opposed to, I truly believe that if we're appointing somebody to the conservation commission or to, or to the historical committee, they, we ought to try to see if that person will truly represent the, the select board. They, they are our arm of, of work in that area. And I think it's important that we, A, recruit people that we think are, are, will act that way, and then appoint people who we think will act in accordance to the way we wanna act. But if we see committees we appoint acting counter to the way we, as a group or individuals want them to act, shame on us. Don't, don't bother them. I mean, literally, how many of you can sit here and say, we've asked important questions and policy que, questions of people? I mean, the, I, I'll give you an example. At the last meeting, we had people coming before us for appointment to the council on aging, and I point-blank asked them, what do you see your role as, advisory or action? And I thought it was important, and I voted accordingly to the way they answered. And I encourage everybody to do that.
Marie?
Yes?
I, to, to your point of relationship with committees, I, early on the board, a board member asked a member of the audit committee a question about, here's what the select board would like you to look at, and it wasn't Mr. Landon, so he's off the hook 'cause he's still here. So, but I remember that the chair of the committee said that, we're gonna do what we wanna do. And the reality is, they're on the committee. Once we appoint them, I, you know, the relationship, that was an answer that was given back to the board. I mean, that, we're gonna do what we wanna do, what we see, we're gonna go down the avenue we wanna go down. Um, I don't know how you do, other than what Mark said, I think one of the things that, you know, sometimes it's, it, maybe it's better not to vote for, to add someone to a committee if they're really, I think part of the attendance is, you know, Mark said that, you know, they're breathing and they sent in a resume, we say, okay, you're on it. And I remember there was a year, a few years back, there was someone who wanted to be on two committees, we appointed him to two committees, never showed up at them. And eventually after a year was off of them. So I think part of that is not just appointing someone to appoint it, but just to, I think, and you can only, you can only ask, you know, of course, if they're gonna, if they know we're gonna ask them, what's your relationship with the select board, they're gonna say, oh, I'm advisory team, I'm gonna carry out the duties of the board and so forth, and then they can still be on the board and do whatever they want. I, I don't, I, I think once that, once those people are appointed to the board, even though they are advisory to us and they, they will say that, I don't, you know, I, I, listen, I, you and I have been going to council on aging meetings. They did not come to us and advise us on some of the things that they were talking about in their advisory to the board. So they went down the road, they thought they could go down, and they were under their own rules, so they weren't out of line or anything. But I don't know how you foster that to say, oh, no, you're advisory to us coming to it. I know when I was chair, probably four or five years ago, when Mark was chair, we tried to get the boards in on a regular basis and sometimes they, no one would show up and you, you just, you don't get that follow-through, you know? At one, I think a few years ago, he asked for if the boards that we appoint, only the boards that we appointed, if they would send their minute meetings to us, or meeting minutes, I'm sorry, to us when they, when they were done. And I think there's only two people that complied. You can't go back and say, you're off the committee now. But in the charter, it says, except for those appointed in the charter, we have the ability except for those appointed in the charter, we have the ability to go and eliminate them, or whatever we want to do to them. And maybe the, some of the things is to take a look and if they have a seven-member committee, maybe the thing to do is put them down to five. And, you know, or something like that, because it's hard to reach a quorum when you have seven, and, you know, two of you or three of you show up, and you're always having, and we had that issue with a couple of committees, that there just weren't enough members. So sometimes maybe there's too many members. But I would, I would start to look at if we really want to identify it as, okay, which of the ones are we having problems with and why? Is it because the leadership changed on the board? Sometimes that has effect to it, when you have a long-term chair of the board leave, and then people say, "Well, I don't want to really do that work. It was great that that person, like Mr. Gold was on capital planning," and, you know, and so when he leaves, maybe people say, "Okay, I'm done," or something. Or when Richard left Capital Planning, it all seemed to go to hell after he left, so maybe there's some correlation to that. But my point is that, you know, maybe that's part of it, is that there's that, there's not that succession of leadership either, and maybe we need to do a better job in bringing those boards into us and get more interactive with them. And I think that's where probably we have failed. We probably haven't been as active as we should be with them.
All right, well, we'll start the discussion. I'll reach out to all the boards and ask them what their recommendations are on maybe changes in composition, if they see is any value of combining some of the committees. Maybe Conservation and Tree Committee would work well together. Maybe Cable Advisory should be with another board, or we could start looking at liaisons, if they feel having a select board member liaison on their board to bring the information back. I believe that we have very good communication with Council of Aging, because we have been attending and bringing the information back, and maybe we need to start, as a board, doing that with more of the boards. All right, so we'll move it along.
Marie, can we, I asked that we just talk for a moment about something I brought up at the beginning, which is Genesis House Generator, and how we want to, if anybody else feels that I do, that there needs to be a, some kind of agreement?
Well, I think it's, I had put it down, that I would put it on the agenda for the third, because I know there is some, an agreement of some kind with Genesis for emergency sheltering. Now, the idea of whether that MOU also includes maintenance and liability, I think we would need a report from the town manager on. So I will definitely have that on the agenda. And the same thing for the Williams Boiler, I had put that down for an agenda item, and Richard said he'd have his thing available.
Okay, yeah, that one.
Yeah, and the other things is, I've actually put down the manholes, clay courts, and the 600K storm money, where we need to do the advocacy.
Excuse me.
And casino mitigation update. So there's a lot of things going to be on that third.
It still consists back to that same discussion that we had. We are supposed to do a review of our charter.
Yeah.
And we haven't. And I can't, I can't imagine that the board doesn't want to do a review of the charter as it's recommended.
And a review would be a committee. Commission would have to wait till next year.
Yeah, but I mean, they recommend it, and we're not even wanting to do that. And that's what puzzles me a little bit. I mean, this, that's an important function.
Do you want to do a motion for a charter review committee?
Well, I think we can put it up and get it voted down or whatever, but I still think we should, at least as the responsible individuals, go forth and do the, what is supposed to be done by all the communities.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion. Well, then we get to whether we go to the commission or the, or the committee.
Well, at this point, it would have to be a committee, because the commission needs to have people put on the ballot for the town election, which can't happen until next year.
What's that, Mark?
No, I mean, this is a circular, we, I'll go back, but within the last two months, we've taken both a vote at the same meeting for a charter committee that was failed, and a charter commission, which failed at the same meeting. So we're going to go back and look at that, and that's fine, we can vote on the same things over and over again. My question is, how are we going to get a committee? We can't get people, and how are we going to charter the committee? And what are we going to charter them to, or charge them to have? And I think we got to know what we're going to, you know, we can form a committee, but, but, yeah, they've got to have an objective and a goal and a timeframe and what, what their scope is and all that kind of stuff, and I, you know, and, so it's more than just voting for a committee.
Right, but the, I understand was when we went to the MMA, towns are doing this, there's actual format that it's done. Now, we know attorneys that are doing it out there, but I'm sure our attorney could also manage the, what, what compliment page we're doing, town after town. So there is a format we could follow. Now, so was that a motion for a charter review committee, or not?
You know, I, I'm not sure. It's not going to pass anyway.
It might. Throw it out there and see.
We played this game before, and then we swapped roles in the bill, which was really confusing.
Yeah, but you did commission last time. You voted commission, you voted against the committee.
I won charter commission last time.
Well, yes, you did.
And that's the part that fails, because I really, to get back to Mark's point, what do we want to review of? Is it just parts of the charter? That's a charter committee. But if it's the whole charter, that's a charter commission. A charter committee cannot, I mean, there's, again, you can go right in the charter and look. We can dissolve committees.
Right.
So if it's really just a fact about committees, we can sit here and discuss and have an agenda item that says, "What committees do we want to look at?" But if we really want to review the charter, I want to know before we vote on something or have a motion. And second, it is, I think there needs to be a scope of that motion that says, "Here's exactly what we want to work at, look at," because obviously, there's a difference between the charter, the commission and the committee. Some things that the committee can and can't, or can't do, is what the commission can do, and I think we need to know those before we, the line.
Well, we, we do know what it is. What it is, is a charter commission is, if we are going to change the role of the town manager or the select board, the executive branches in any way, we must have a commission. But what often is done is in these towns, and the charter review committee then decides, "We need a commission," and then by the spring, we would be able to put a commission together. Yeah.
Marie, you obviously have energy around this, and not that you have a lot of free time on your hands, because I think people don't realize how much time it takes to be chair of the select board. But because I anticipate that after the election, we may reorganize, and you will have more free time on your hands, I'd like to ask if you would feel comfortable putting together the scope of work that would be proposed for a charter committee, so that when, if we went to vote on a charter committee, we could be voting on, knowing what we're voting on, instead of forming a committee to go look at things, as opposed to forming a committee to look at these specific items, coming up with these specific recommendations. And I know that's putting this off, but we're not putting it off six months, we're putting it off a couple.
I will put it off till June 3, because Richard and I actually have two contacts, and I will contact, that town, was it Northboro?
Yeah.
I got to check my little cards.
I've got the lawyer.
And I will ask, oh, you have the lawyer's name, good. I will have Richard help me.
But the other, the other thing, though, that I didn't like to hear what Mark was saying, was getting back to what Paul said, we don't want to cherry pick.
Yeah.
That's ridiculous, if we're going to cherry pick. I mean, it's, that, then why have anything? You know, I mean, we're going to go hand-pick the people that are going to come in and do what we tell them to do. That's kind of phony, that's not transparent.
So we'll see what the other towns are doing. I'll bring that back in the third, I'll put it in the package. So you have homework, I have homework, and so we, between that and the interviews, it'll be a very busy June 3. Alex?
I guess the thing that, you know, my concern about this is, in the year that I've been on this board, I mean, we haven't really taken a stab at it. I mean, and I feel like the five people on this board are probably the most, or some of the most knowledgeable, if not the most knowledgeable, about what the issues are. It seems like we ought to try to take, you know, make an effort on our own to deal with some of these issues. And then if we finally decide, okay, the select board can't accomplish anything, or can't, or can only go so far, okay, then maybe we look at changing the charter. But, I mean, this feels so much like a solution in search of a problem, rather than the other way around.
Okay. All right, and so, moving on to town manager reports.
Very quickly, this afternoon, I had sent around the notes from the department head meeting this morning, which gave some idea of what had transpired during the last week and potentially what was going on in the week to come. Just to follow up on that and a couple of other things, Senate Ways and Means has their numbers out. As far as state aid, it's relatively the same as the House. It still is good news for the town, it's about $34,000 greater than what we used in the actual projection at town meeting. And the Senate numbers also have an additional $6,000 for the library, which the House numbers didn't. So that's just one thing. Audit committee is meeting tomorrow afternoon. They're interviewing two independent audit firms for the audit contract that will begin with the FY '15 fiscal year. The dog license, or the dog that was involved with regard to the May 5 hearing, that dog has not been licensed as of yet, it's FYI. The Laurel Street project, the sewer project, is going a little bit slower than anticipated. They're being very careful around the utilities, so not to run into any type of the same problems that they ran into with Meriwether and things to that nature last, last fall, I guess. They're also expected to be done towards the end of June. They do have a staging area over by Bliss Park, they know that they have to be, they have to be out of there or very have minimal impact to that area at the time of the Bliss Park pool opening, which is scheduled on time to be mid-June. The Greenwood Pool does need some patching and repairs, and it is hoped to be open on time for that mid-June period. There's not been a commitment actually at that one at this point in time. The Williams Milling went on today, it's expected, although it looks like it was mainly done. Mike had said it was probably going on through Wednesday. There will be some sporadic closings of William Street to do some of that work. The detour today, in conjunction with the project that the Laurel Street created, some citizens concerned over, because of the foot traffic from the school, was now being, heading right into where the detour was going through those backways. We did have a police presence there after school, and the police chief, I've sent him an email to ask for additional police presence during the after-school period during those times, if those detours are still in place. So hopefully, those will not be a concern with that additional traffic. And again, apparently, there is not too many sidewalks over in that area where that detour was, so it does create a little problem. The Barrington Road water, that is, that was tested today. I don't know the results of the test, but it's a multi-part test, and as soon as they pass the first part, I think they have to do a couple of days of positive testing on that. One of the problems in getting that testing in place is that the bleeding of the pipes has a very small diameter, the pipes that they're using, as opposed to a lot of the main flushing that can go on in the other areas. So that's one of the minor issues. Mike was hoping that today's test would pass and the project would be moving forward. The post-prom party is scheduled for next week. They've been in contact with the Parks and Rec. The Parks and Rec is certainly okay with the permit. They have contacted the police department, because officers have been assigned. The police chief has reached out to the woman just to have a conversation with regard to anything else. So I do believe that everything is in place with regard to that post-prom party also, so.
Thank you. Any questions? Paul?
Yeah, and I thank you for bringing up the work that's being done on the roads, because I had a few complaints today about that. I really, I think one of the things we need to look at is the timing, and, for example, going, people going to pick someone up at the high school this afternoon, or anywhere, couldn't take a right onto William Street from Bliss Road, behind, in front of the tennis court, that was blocked off. But then, as you came down Grassy Gutter, cars were coming down one way, you couldn't take a right back onto William Street, so you had to go down. And this morning was, I have never seen so much confusion and congestion this morning in different parts of the town, all somewhat connected. And I don't know who thought working on Bliss Road, William Street, and Laurel Street, all at the same time, was a wonderful idea, when we had detours going through, through the place. But I don't think the timing was good, and I really, it just, there were too many things working at the same time that were closed. And to get to, just to get from one part of the town to the other on Bliss Road, took a while this morning. Whether I was dropping my son off, or even just trying to get to the other side of town, and forgetting, again, I mean, I'm not the brightest bulb in the shed and going down the same road, knowing there was construction there, so that was my fault. But I really have a question about the timing of all those projects that were interconnected, and they were such in a small space of the town, that the detours, I think, were just very confusing to people. I'm glad there was a police presence out there, and I really am, I think that was, that's a great idea. The other thing, I just want to go back to, I, Paul read the email from, from the DPW director about the clay courts. I'm not happy with that answer. I really, I really like a detailed explanation of why. Well, the clay courts were being, they were delayed by the weather getting started, but so is every other clay court in the country, I mean, or at least in the Northeast. And I just don't, I don't like that answer. I don't, I really like to find out, there was a process that was put in place last year. We actually delayed the opening last year to make sure that we had the right process in, and we hired someone as a town employee, which we did this year. And I just think that, you know, for those things to be open at the end of May, when, you know, you could go play tennis on Bliss Courts, those nuts were up in the beginning of April. And I understand one's different than the other, but scheduling the work to be done, that schedule, the schedule of the work had to go way back in the wintertime, I would imagine. Not, you're not scheduling it now. So I'm really torqued off at that, because we put more money and personnel into that, at the recommendation of two of our department heads, and they're still not open. And I don't play tennis, so it doesn't affect me. But we put that additional money in there, and there was an issue with putting that together, and we were guaranteed that those were going to, the process and the money was going to be the reason why those courts would get open on time. And to have that, that, again, is just, I don't think it's acceptable. I just, I really have an issue with that answer, but I'd just like a little bit more detail of what the process is, and not, I don't know how else to put it, but.
Richard?
Yeah, of course, I guess the one thing that irritates me is that they're all weeded in again, the courts. So they need sprayed weed control. I mean, that's a 10-minute job, but anyway, that's whatever. And I think we did ask to have them open by May 1. I looked at old paperwork, and I think Stephen came back and said, "Well, May 1, maybe delay to the middle of the month of weather," but the weather hasn't been a condition, it's just, and we thought we had them sealed. We had a contractor, we put the money there and everything, so, but anyway. On the detours, was there any notification that Williams, did anybody know Williams was going to be closed today?
I wasn't listening too carefully to the message I got through.
I didn't know, did anybody know?
It was a message that came out on Laurel, but I'm not sure if it said Laurel.
Yeah, right, I knew Laurel, but Williams was a total surprise. And, and I agree, I got caught in it. Matter of fact, I passed you, you were coming south and I was heading north. I was on streets I never even knew were in town, because I was coming down Williams, had to go on up, and then was shot over to the neighborhood trying to get to Bliss. I didn't know Williams, if I'd known Williams was going to be worked on today, I would not have used it. I guess that's the bottom line. I would have came back into Maple and whatever.
Could you check that, Paul, about if they're still going to be closed tomorrow? Maybe we need to put a blackboard notification out for that one also.
There was one other concern I had, Marie, and I don't know if we can do anything about it, and it dealt with semi-tractor trailers, because that detour that we went through today was pretty tight, for semi-tractor trailers twisting through the neighborhoods.
Yeah, that's an issue I've actually brought up with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, several people, about can we control what streets the semis are going down.
Yeah, but I mean, that detour was taking them right into the residential areas, and it was going to be very tight.
You can't keep trucks off of what are called state highways, which are Williams, Bliss, Frank Smith, Laurel. The problem is, in, yeah, the problem is, when we detour, you know, they've got good intentions of going down the main road, and then there's a cop telling them, "Go down, you know, Wilken or some small little road."
Right. And that's what would happen today, Mark, if there was traffic, big ones coming this way. They were taken up into some pretty-
Believe me, they didn't want to be down there any more than we probably, than we wanted, you know.
Alex?
And now, you had mentioned the work that's being done on Laurel, into the staging area at Bliss Park.
Yes.
I saw that. I don't, I don't know how that's going to work. I mean, where, I mean, there's gravel, there looks like there's going to be machinery there, right from the parking lot, which is where kids walk right by to get to playground. And I really kind of wondered about why it was there. And it struck me that almost anywhere would have been better. I don't know, do, I mean, I'm assuming if you've got gravel, you're going to have to have heavy machinery to move that gravel from there. And, you know, those machines are going to be backing, I mean, like, I mean, you know, I live very near there, my kids, you know, that's, that's where they go. And, I mean, and that's a very popular playground. I mean, like, you know, we're talking about toddlers and, you know, preschoolers. I mean, do you know if there's any way it could be anywhere else?
I can ask. When it comes to the playground area, you got to understand, there's another parking lot by the playground area. The main concern that I brought up was for this pool opening, which would use that parking lot where that is.
Right.
But I can certainly inquire if the staging area, because of, again, kids would wander out from the play area to-
I mean, it's really close.
Yeah, no, you're right, they're, they're next to each other. I could inquire.
And normally, a staging area like that should be fenced. It'd be temporary fenced, and I, and we don't get into it, but that's really how you do a staging area. You fence it off, because you don't want the public anywhere near that area.
Yeah, well, in that case, the whole parking lot would be fenced off.
Well, that's right. If you opt that you're going to use that staging area, you shut the whole thing off, you don't let anybody in there, except who's supposed to be there, and that's the contractor. That's for their protection, too, and the town's protection for Torquay.
Mark?
Yeah, I guess, Paul, my, you know, I express, I have some of the same concerns you've heard here this evening, but, but my real concern is the what-if, that we, you know, what if Laurel continues, the work on Laurel continues to be a little bit slower than we anticipated? Do we have a Plan B other than to say, "Sorry, folks, you don't have access to the pool parking lot when the pool's open?" Because, you know, I really don't want to come back then and say, "Well, we thought," when we now can see ahead that we might have to come up with Plan B. And so I would ask that our, you know, our DPW or whoever's liaison with the contractor, make them aware of the need for- of the need for the town to have that open. And, you know, we did this, we had the same thing a year ago, or last, last fall, when we were on Merryweather, and the comment we heard was, we can't tell the, the contractor methods and materials, they've been on the project. But, you know, I think at this point, we can't afford to have the, no access, or have that parking lot closed in a month from now. Uh, so I, I mean, I, I understand you don't have, and I'm not looking for an answer right now, I just think we need to make sure that our liaison with them is, got them answering questions. Not to mention the people who were on Merryweather, you know, doing things with, with manholes open and things like that. I think there needs to be some discussions with these contractors.
Just, just from Mike's email, uh, you know, we under, it goes back to the Bliss parking lot opening up around the 16th, uh, on weekends, and then right after school ends, and, uh, the instructions, by that time, all structures, gravel, et cetera, will be removed from the park. So they have had the conversation already. Now, whether it, whether-
By the 16th.
By, by the 16th. Um, but whether or not, again, if they fall with a further delay, I, I mean, I think that's more of your point, if they get delayed further, is this still valid?
Well, and you have, you have interaction right now between a contractor and civilians in there, and that shouldn't be allowed.
Because there's no fencing.
Yeah, they should, they should, you shouldn't mix those two, period.
Well, and one of the issues is that part, I mean, there's a lot of foot traffic.
Right.
And in fact, there's a crossing guard, uh, where Westmoreland-
Right.
It, precisely because there are a lot of kids that go across right at that point, and any foot traffic is going to be going right by or through that parking lot.
In the summers.
That could be accommodated through fencing, temporary fencing, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Um, motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.[1789.33]